So I am on set for meeting to order on August 27th at 6:30 PM. Hi, everybody. Hello, Marguerite. Okay, we've got a pretty full agenda tonight, so let's get going. So we're going to start off with our normal public comment for anything somebody wants to talk about that is not officially on the agenda tonight. No more than three minutes, please. Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, three minutes. Great. It wasn't on the warrant. I want to file this for the warrant. I went to the town clerk with 140 signatures. I don't know if it will. Maybe I made a clerical error and it won't. In which case, I was hoping the select board would input it. It would be the adoption to have the select board submit to the state to adopt Hopkin's recall bylaw as our same. It's not to create mischief. It would require 20% of the town to actually sign in signatures to have a recall. Andrew and I only got 15% turnout in the last election, so it would have to be something Herculean. So I look at this bylaw as more of housekeeping, where we should have this bylaw in case in the future there is a problem with any public official that the public deems unworthy of being there. So I will leave this over there on the table.
It applies to all public officials or select board?
It would apply to elected public officials.
Elected, okay.
So that's all it is. And it just calls for us basically to take Hopkin's bylaw, put our own name in.
Okay, so your request to us is if you haven't submitted enough signatures for a citizen's position?
There are enough. There were 140 signatures on it.
Well, then he's going to certify it, so.
If, I'm just saying. I was just mentioning to you that at the last minute, I didn't see listed for this meeting on the warrant, and if it wasn't that, you would please just include it.
All right, I'm not supposed to be commenting, but I couldn't help it. Okay, so we get you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just put there.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Vanessa, anybody in the audience with a hand up? No? All right, let's go on. Okay, first one is an appointment to one of the vacancies on the Tricentennial Committee. In fact, I think it's the only vacancy right now, possibly.
There's two.
There's two? Okay, the veteran, I think the veterans is still open. Okay, so this is one of the two. Okay, so Sandy Pochapin, if I'm saying that right?
Pochapin.
Pochapin has applied for that. Is she in the audience?
Yes.
Okay, good. So have you brought her over? Yes, she is. Hi, Sandy.
Hi.
So welcome.
Thank you.
So before we ask any questions, if anybody's got any questions, Don Morris did send a letter of high recommendation to appoint Sandy to the Tricentennial Committee. So Sandy, you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this committee?
I am a marketing project manager slash event marketer with about years of experience. I've worked for the largest trade show producer in the world doing marketing. I've worked for Bose, I've worked for Hologic, I've worked for Renewal by Anderson during their events program for seven years. So I have a lot of experience in events, and I happened to see something that I thought might be a good idea to try for the Tricentennial, and I mentioned it to Ryan Donovan at the library, and he said, "Well, you really should think about joining the committee." So apparently, I've joined the committee.
Well, what a background, what a relevant background. So, yes, this is great. So I definitely don't have any questions. Al?
No question, no question.
Marguerite? Sam?
Yeah, I watched the Tricentennial Committee meeting the other evening where Sandy went through her background and talked with the committee. I think she's extremely well qualified, delighted to see her apply for this.
Great. Andrew?
Sandy, this is Andrew. I am happy that you're going to be joining us, and I was, I'm on the Tricentennial Committee, and Sandy participated a lot last night and made some very practical suggestions, for example, for our planning for Heritage Day. So look forward to having her on board.
Yeah, that's great. So I just want to make sure I've got this right. Pochapin?
No, Pochapin.
Pochapin, okay. I'm doing the X in the wrong side.
That's okay. Don't worry about it. My husband's name is longer, so I don't even use it.
Okay, now I can, I get it. I just put the X right. Okay. All right, so this one's, I think, pretty easy. So someone want to make a motion to appoint Sandy to the Tricentennial Committee for a term ending 6/30/25?
I move that the board appoint Sandy Pochapin to the Tricentennial Committee for a term to expire June 30, 2025.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Mr. Hamilton?
You can't see Sandy, we're all saying yes, so good.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you, I think.
We'll go raise hands and not wear a person. So Sandy, 5-0 vote, not surprising. So the only thing you've got to do now is go see the town clerk during business hours and get sworn in?
Okay.
Okay? And then you will be officially on the committee.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the next one is our public forum for regional dispatch service changes. And as everybody knows, Al and Sam have led our effort this year to try to figure out what we should do, so I'm going to turn this over to Al, who has a PowerPoint that was in our packet.
All right, I promised I would talk fast. So what I'd like to do is, over the last really 16 months, Sam and I and the two chiefs and the town administrator have been engaged in a due diligence effort to really determine what makes sense with respect to whether we should join a regional dispatch system or not. So what is a regional dispatch system? A regional emergency communication system. It is simply a group of communities pooling their resources to provide the service of dispatch. In principle, it's no different from other regional organizations that we participate in, such as high schools, VOTEC schools, libraries. Our public health operations are now, have a regional component, and of course, one of the big ones that we never really think about is our mutual aid networks for both fire and police. So we can go to the next slide. The RECs are, I'm going to use the word RECs, Regional Emergency Communication Services. They are common in the United States. They're quite often centered around a county or a large city. They can be fire-only, police-only, or they can be combined. The technology is mature. Frankly, Massachusetts is quite late in the game to the REC business. And in fact, go to the next slide. This is an example of a regional dispatch system in Holbrook, Massachusetts. This, there are about a dozen stations. They cover seven different communities and serve about 150,000 people. 100,000 is, by the way, we think, an important number. So we can go to the next slide. Believe it or not, RECs are in fact common in Massachusetts. They're far more common in the western part of the state where the towns are smaller, although I will point out that we are also a small town. And they are gaining in popularity in the eastern part of the state. If you go to the next slide. What you can see here is the number of communities that were parts of RECs in 2014 and now in 2024. What we've seen is 27 communities in the greater Boston area, that's essentially Plymouth North and Worcester East, have joined RECs in the recent years. Go to the next slide. So the question is, is should South Grove join a REC? We've been doing this for a long, for now, for 16 months, as well as the efforts that were done earlier. We visited three operating RECs, Holbrook, Devens, and Foxborough. They have more fancy names, but those are the ones everybody uses. And we've talked to two RECs that are in the process of being formed, Westboro and Framingham. We have confirmed that the Metro West REC building is no longer located on a Super Fun site. That changed, that was a big concern at the last town meeting, and we, that has been addressed. We have met with Northboro, Marlboro, Ashland, and one other, Westboro. And we've investigated the concept of a virtual REC, which is a new innovative idea that was brought up by our municipal technology committee. We spent a fair amount of time vetting that idea. It is an idea that has a lot of merit, but is, I think, beyond our capacity to implement at this time. Frankly, it requires state support, and the campaign to Joan Garner, state support would be substantial, and we have other fish to fry to not to put too delicate a point on it. We've had a number of conversations with state 911 managers. The chief surveyed the mass police chiefs, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that. We interviewed, it's not five, it's four retired police chiefs, or fire chiefs, when we did the assessment that hired our new fire chief. And we've surveyed the greater, greater Boston RECs to gather some information on performance data. Next slide. So the first thing to come out is that the police chiefs are very satisfied with the RECs. And this is actually, was a bit of a surprise to us. If you look at it, 85% of those responding, and I know the slide looks like it's more like three quarters, but the yellow section there is no response. So of the people that responded, 85%, that is 17 of 20, were very satisfied with the RECs. Now, in the public world, if you get an 85% approval rating, that's, that's pretty good. So we go to the next slide. We, when we asked, "Would you join again?", it was 80% of those, again, responding, again, we had the same four no responses, said yes, they would join again. There was only one, 5% of those that responded that said no. One of the interesting things, could we go to the next slide? One of the things that we'd asked was, "What are your motivations?" A lot of these were open-ended questions, and this was one that surprised us but has since been driven home. Six of the 13 mentioned difficulty in hiring dispatchers. Dispatching is not an easy job. It's got its own set of stresses, and frankly, when you're working alone, it can be a little on the lonely side. Another six of 13 mentioned cost savings. We're going to talk a lot more about that. There was mention of single dispatcher risk, which is something that we've talked about at town meetings. We talked about the ability to upgrade their current equipment, and if you go down and look at our dispatch center, you will see that there are millions of dollars worth of equipment sitting behind, sitting in an air-conditioned room, and it is, got a lifespan of roughly 10 years. So there's, and then there's all of the equipment, the communications equipment that our first responders carry, and that is also hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of equipment. So equipment upgrades and then quality improvements. The fire chief's input was a little different because I took advantage of a freebie. One of the things to note is that the fire services, which is really fire and ambulance, are already regional. You know, we have mutual aid agreements. We go to our neighboring communities whenever we have a serious emergency, and they come to us whenever we have a serious emergency. So, you know, the term that's used is, you know, we're in and out of each other's stations every day. And so, you know, we already have a strong regional presence. And so this is something that is of substantial interest to members of the fire service. Their primary interest was the integration of the REC and our mutual aid network, and this was something that came out, which was different from our original thinking. When we first start, when I first started thinking about this, and I have a background in communications, I thought, "Well, you know, you can do this from anywhere." Right? You know, we could, we could outsource this to Bangalore if we wanted. And I was quickly disabused of that, and that in fact, there's a tremendous benefit to being able to have your regional dispatch operation overlap with your mutual aid network. Because when your regional dispatch system can then essentially access what we're going to call the digital firehouse, which means that we can, that the dispatcher can know the status not only of every crew and every piece of equipment in the inventory, whether it's available for, to be dispatched, or whether it's already, whether it's out of service, or whether it's already being used on another event. And this is actually quite important, and we're going to talk a little bit more about this in a minute. And then, you know, basically, you know, I met with these chiefs because we were doing the assessment center to hire our new fire chief. And so I had four fire chiefs sitting there at lunch, and so I decided I was going to, you know, save the town some money and just pick their brains. And so what I got was a, essentially, a long list of stories about, you know, how RECs made dispatching faster and more effective. And frankly, speed is actually what's really important in these types of events. So it's also important to police operations, and you know, whether we think about our police operations, doing mutual aid, we don't think about that often, but it does happen. The recent shooting that happened in Northboro was in fact, a regional response. There were offices, you know, there was the state police, there were two cruisers from Marlboro, and there was a cruiser from South Grove that helped, that responded to that event. So the need to overlap not only with our fire services, but also with all of our public safety enterprises is important. So we can go to the next slide. So we did a survey of the greater Boston RECs, and we got, I think, four responded. And one of the questions we asked is, "How many people do you have on, on your busiest shift?" And the answer we got was somewhere between one dispatcher per 9,500 people in terms of the population covered, and 12,000. So that number is roughly, you know, one dispatcher for every 10,000 of population that's covered. Now that's, you know, busy shift during the day, it's not at night. South Grove, we have, have, in the past, we have had one dispatcher on, and we have a population of 10,450. So, you know, we are right in line with a single dispatcher with sort of the, what I'll call the industry standard, or the REC standards. We also asked them what their operating budget was, and we asked what their operating budget was before any subsidies. So this is the total cost to operate the REC. And it ran somewhere between $42 and $65 per capita, for every person covered in their area. Now, in South Grove, when we operated in 2024, when we had a single dispatcher, the number for us was about $58. So we're right in the middle of that range. But we know that have, that there is substantial single dispatcher risk. We've added two new full-time dispatchers, and that's bringing that up to $78 per person covered, which is now, you know, the north end of that range. And if we were to go to 24/7, which would need another two dispatchers, it would probably rise into the neighborhood of $98. I want to stress that economics is actually not the reason to do this. We're going to go forward in just a minute. So why are we thinking about doing this? We know that having a single dispatcher is a, is a risk point. We've talked about this multiple times at town meeting. The life of a dispatcher, you know, is, can be very, very challenging. If you have a single dispatcher, you know, we are now expecting that the dispatcher will be able to deliver immediate aid over the, aid and instruction over the phone, whether it's how to do CPR, or how to protect yourself in a, in a serious event. At the same time, that single person has to go out and find the resources to respond to that. Now, sometimes it's easy, but sometimes it isn't. Sometimes it might require, you know, contacting a neighboring town to bring a resource in. And so that's a little tricky. And we are now talking about an enterprise that, where minutes matter, you know, in, in life safety, you know, we talk about the golden hour. Well, you know, it can be minutes to organize that response versus, and far less under a REC. The other thing that we have started to discover is that we're having challenge hiring dispatchers as well. Town meeting authorized the spending to hire two additional full-time dispatchers, and those, and we still have one full-time and one half-time or part-time dispatcher positions that are open, you know, two months into the fiscal year. So, you know, hiring is going to become more and more of a challenge for all of our public institutions, and this is no exception. We can, we can authorize the money, but we can't force people to apply. So we can go to the next slide. The other issue, one of the other issues that came up is the dark station. And I think that the term "dark station" is a bit of a misnomer. Today, if somebody arrives at the public safety building with a crisis, they're going to be greeted by the dispatcher behind the glass, and that dispatcher will marshal the resources necessary to deal with that problem. They will not come out from behind the glass. They cannot come out from behind the glass. Their duty is to always be there to communicate. In a REC, if you walk in the door with a crisis, you will be greeted by a dispatcher. They'll be on a screen, they'll be, you'll be able to talk to them. And that dispatcher will perform the same set of functions that is marshaling the resources to address your particular need. So just, in all of the RECs that we met with, the dispatchers had the ability to lock and unlock doors, which is actually quite important. You know, if somebody's chasing you, you go to the police station, run in, you want the door locked behind you, and the dispatcher can lock and unlock doors to provide measures of security. When we talked to the chiefs, again, or when we surveyed the chiefs, four of the 15 that responded to this question said that their stations were manned 24/7. They tended to be larger communities. Seven of the 15 reported that their lobbies are linked to the REC in the manner that I just described, and four of them had, four of the 15 had what I would describe as a hybrid model, where they are partially staffed and partially digitally integrated. So can we go to the next slide? Now, I'm not going to sugarcoat this. Like anything, there are risks involved. There are startup risks. You know, a REC is going to use, will use very mature technologies, this is well understood, but any new enterprise can run into hiccups. I've worked in startups. Things don't always go as you seem. So one of, the feedback that we've gotten is, one, don't turn the REC on until everything works. Resist the temptation, say, "Well, we can just start it here, and, you know, we'll patch this other stuff." No. When we turn it on, it better work because people's lives depend on it. Staff training, including having dispatchers do ride-alongs in each of the communities they serve, so they can get to know the police officers and firefighter EMTs, is important so they can get to know them and they can know each other, and they can get to know the communities. Coordinating procedures, one of the things that's going to happen is, is that obviously dispatch standards have to be harmonized between all of the communities, and there's a lot of work to be done there. And, you know, you can't have, you know, South Grove does it this way, Westboro does it this way, Ashland does it that way. Now, there has to be a harmonized procedures, and I, and we've had some discussions about Then it becomes training, 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 and communication, communication, communication. It is, these are sort of articles of faith. On the finance side, there are some short-term benefits. For the next three to five years, once the REC gets turned on, the state offers very nice subsidies where they'll pick up the operating costs for some or all of the operating costs for the, for the initial introduction period. For us, that would be, have a value of something on the order of $3 million. There are also some long-term capital cost benefits where the state, state would take over, things like our radio networks. And, but I want to stress that we're really more focused on this as a way of enhancing and providing public safety benefits as opposed to financing. Because I think in the long term, we're going to spend, once we get past that three-to-five year period, we're going to spend about what we were spending in 2024, adjusted for inflation. But, you know, so there's, there's, there's no magic bullet here. These services cost money, and eventually, we're going to have to pay for them. I think that, I think we can reasonably expect that, that those costs are going to be about what we're spending now, or what we spent last year. The other sort of growth, risk area is that, you know, from the RECs that we've seen, I think you need to get to a magic number of about 100,000 people covered. That's, I think, is, is a number where, that gives you sufficient scale to really be economic. And so that is, you know, a REC needs to have a plan to integrate neighboring communities as we go forward. So, so our recommendation is that we begin the process of seeing if we can work out a deal with the Metro West REC, which is the REC that currently involves both Westboro and Grafton. And I know that there are other communities that are also thinking about this, but we, we think this is the best opportunity to integrate with our mutual aid network. It is, if we join it, we cover a population of about 50,000. It's about halfway where we need to go. There are certainly, within the immediate neighborhood, about 150,000 people. So I think there is reasonable prospects for growth. That's obviously something we have to negotiate. We believe that they would offer even at 50,000 sufficient resources to give us the depth of coverage, and it's depth of coverage that is important, is when, you know, when things hit the fan, and, you know, we have two, two or three events happening quickly in town, we want to have two or three or four dispatch, a dispatch team there to help us respond, as do other communities. The other advantage at this point, as I say, the Metro West REC has not been established. It is in the process. They've gotten their initial funding, and they are just getting ready to hire an executive director. Would mean that, in particular, the chiefs would be in at the ground floor. That means that they get a say in those harmonized operating procedures, they get a say in who gets hired, they would have a platform for advocating for their people if they want to move over. What we are recommending for the dark station is that in the first year of REC operations, we staff the public safety building 24/7, and then evaluate the usage patterns and how things are going, and proceed from there. So that would be our recommendation. We're not going to save a lot of money in the long term, but we do think that there are some opportunities to save on capital costs such as radios and CAD system. CAD is computer-aided dispatch, not computer-aided design, and, and which are very expensive systems. So that is our recommendation. You know, our recommendation is, is that the, that we begin the process of meeting with our, our neighbors and seeing if we can work out terms that meet our needs. Any questions?
Al, can I add a couple of points there? As one who's been involved in this process, my, my major takeaway from this is that longer term, it looks like we would wind up spending about the same as we're spending now in terms of the operating costs. There are advantages in terms of capital costs that the state is likely to support us with longer term, which is not insignificant. But the real bottom line is, we're buying bench strength or depth here, and that in a REC that we can start with even, we're going to have at least two, three, four dispatchers on duty at any point in time. And if we can get to the 150,000 level or so, Holbrook, I think, had like six on duty at any given time, something like that, so there's dramatically larger capacity to deal with complex events. And as Al said, minutes save lives in this business, and I think we've actually been, taken some risks historically with the staffing that we've had. And so I think it's time to actually address that safety issue, and I think this does the job for that. And I think also, this process has developed good answers for questions, concerns that people have expressed over the last year or so, particularly at town meeting discussion most recently. And so I think we're prepared to, to deal with all those questions at a town meeting going forward here.
Hold on a minute, Marguerite. Well, we're all going to get a chance to ask all kinds of questions. So excellent presentation, gentlemen. So Sam, I'm just going to ask one question because you just said it, just to clarify what you mean by, "We think we're going to spend long-term what we're spending now." Well, fiscal year '25, we added two full-time dispatch positions. One is filled, one's not. We've got a part-time that's also not filled. This does not provide 24/7 to people, though. So what do you mean by, when you say spending right now?
We spent FY '24.
That's what you're talking about? Because '24 is just one person.
Yes. Yeah, so we spent a little over, and when you add all of the costs in, it was a little over $600,000 when you add retirement.
For fiscal year '24?
For fiscal '24. And we think that that's- And we think that that's ballpark what we will spend at a rec. Just as a data point, the four Foxborough communities, which are all larger than us, are spending about, their assessment runs about $600,000. Interestingly, if you went to Devens, and Devens is not as capable a rec as I think we would like, they're spending, I think it's on the order of $225,000. Now, these are smaller communities, so, you know, but, so, the data suggests that we would spend about what we are spending with, what we spent for a single dispatcher.
So then, is it not relevant? And needs to be pointed out that if we don't do this, we need to increase the cost of our dispatch from the 600 to reflect what our concern is, which we think we need two people around the clock, right? So I'm just trying to compare apples to apples here. It looks like we really would save money because we're either going to do the rec or we're going to add a lot more people, right?
Yes, that is correct. We, the data I've seen suggests that for 24/7 would be a number north of $1 million.
Okay. All right. So now, I just wanted to get that in there because Sam had just said that. I wasn't trying to jump in. Okay, so let's, so the three of us, let's ask our questions, then we'll see what everybody else wants to talk about. So, Marguerite, you want to go first?
Yes. There's a blank spot in my understanding of this. I know the schools are run by the school committee, even if it's regional. Those are people from the community doing it. A lot of them are volunteers. As I understand it, a rec is almost like a separate company. And what's the organizational structure? It's not a town department. And what's the accountability if we have dissatisfactions? And the other part of it is, like, what kind of feedback mechanism do we have? Or is this just like dealing with National Grid coming in and giving us electricity? In other words, how do, how do we know they will be responsive to what we, the residents, want to have them respond to?
Sure. So first off, the rec is an independent entity. It is an independent public body, just as the regional school is an independent body, just as, you know, the library, mutual, library lending is in it. Yeah. So it is a separate body. We need to actually spend some time hammering that out. In the old agreement, what, the rec was to be governed by either, by appointed people, and each board would appoint them. In the case of Grafton and Westborough, it was going to be their town administrators or town managers. And in the old agreement, it was going to be a member of the select board. And then they have operating committees. And the operating committees are typically the chiefs. You know, this is, this is a little different than a regional school, which is to say, you know, what we're buying is a very professional service. You know, these are highly skilled professionals. And we're looking to have our highly skilled professionals manage that system. Just as we today have, the police chief is responsible ultimately for our dispatch center. And so...
Well, who is hiring the executive director, for instance?
Oh, so, yeah, so the executive director would be hired by the board. And the board, in the old agreement, and again, you know, one of the things that has to happen if we join the Metro West rec is that the IMA, the intermunicipal agreement, needs to be redone for a variety of reasons. Not the least of which is specified the Hoka Moka Pond site as the, as a building in question, and that's no longer relevant. So I think, so that is a matter that has to be negotiated. But at the end of the day, the people who get held responsible for the performance of the rec are our chiefs. And whoever, you know, we appoint as, to the governing board, the governing board would then hire the executive director.
But it's kind of like a business entity. It's like a company.
I wouldn't call it a company.
Separate legal entity. Separate legal entity.
Marguerite, the best analogy is the school, is the high school, school district. That really is a separate entity. It's got its own people in the school committee. We elect, you know, a couple from here, but it does its own thing. They get, they send us an assessment, we put in our budget. We don't, you know, we can say no to it, but, and there's rules then, what happens there. But it really is separately run. So this is going to be just like that, separately run.
Kathy, if I can jump in here.
Absolutely.
You know, a couple provisions that when, I'm now remembering, is this 18 months ago, two years ago, when we negotiated the IMA that we signed for Metro West rec before the town meeting vote on the citizen petition that was critical of this. Couple, you know, smaller provisions that we negotiated into the agreement that I think are helpful are a requirement that, for example, the executive director provide an annual report to all the communities so we have a document that provides a status report on, okay, here are the goals that the rec had for the coming year. I believe there's also some supermajority vote requirements for certain levels of borrowing and...
Borrowing in capital.
Borrowing in capital. So there are some checks and balances so that, to address the concern that it's going to be a regional entity that just kind of borrows money and spends a lot of money.
Sends us a bill.
Yeah. And also, I do think that there's always, there's some trade-offs, right? There will not be as much control as there would be right now. But, I mean, overall, I think the benefits outweigh the risks. But I do think there's a benefit in being an early adopter, particularly, and hopefully, this would work out in terms of timing. We'd have some role in selecting the executive director of the rec. And, you know, that's something that I think this board would take our participation in that as seriously as we take in, you know, selecting department heads. It's someone that we would want to have an open line of communication with. Because we'd be very invested in the success of the rec's new executive director. And, you know, Al, on your slide, you mentioned, I know that you and Sam have done a lot of work and gone to, I think, three different recs. Also, in the prior iteration of it, you know, Kathy and I and...
Sam?
Sam, yep. We all, we all have been to the Foxborough rec, which is a very impressive facility. It kind of demonstrates how the rec works. And their executive director was very impressive in terms of his experience. And he had experience in the IT field before, really knows his stuff.
Just a speculative question. The rec executive director and their board, or whatever it is, wants to borrow, I don't know, what, $50 million to, I pulled it out of the air, to upgrade something. Does each of the towns in the rec have to vote to approve that? And what happens if one of the towns doesn't?
I think it would depend on what the IMA says.
I think the language in the prior IMA for capital expenditures, I think the towns had to approve those expenditures above some number.
Okay. And if a town doesn't want to?
If the town doesn't want to, that was one of the changes that we negotiated in the prior one, where the prior one, basically, we were stuck for 10 years or something like that. We negotiated an early termination option for a town. I think it's like one-year advance notice. So we might have to suffer for a year, but we could leave. And if we did, we'd have to find another rec at that point. But at least we're not bound to anything that the rec might do.
All right. I'll stop hypothetically.
No, no, these are good questions, so...
So one thing that is important to recognize, and one of the reasons why there's been a lot of concern about this, is this is a bigger decision than we think because if we join a rec, we can't go back. And the reason we can't go back is that today, sitting in our dispatch center is a very expensive piece of hardware that essentially connects our dispatch center to the mobile network, the telephone network. So that when you dial 911, that piece of equipment, along with other pieces of equipment, knows that, you know, where you are and where to send your call. And that piece of equipment will go away. And that equipment was provided by the state. And the state wants people to join recs, one of the other, and so they're not going to give it back. So if we join a rec, it's a one-way decision. It would be very difficult to go back. We could join a different rec, just so you know. We had a number of discussions with Framingham. And Framingham has set up their own rec, and it's now Framingham and Natick. So they've got scale. And, you know, Framingham's been our neighbor for a long time. And they are part of our mutual aid network. We thought that Metro West was slightly better because probably the fire service that we rely on the most is Westborough. And, you know, we hope that Marlboro, which is also another big mutual aid partner, will join. But, you know, they've got to make their own decisions, as do Northborough and Ashland and Hopkinton. But...
So, Marguerite, what you're asking about hasn't been decided yet. That's what discussing and negotiating the IMA is going to be all about, to make sure that we have as much protection. But, you know, we shouldn't go in this thinking we got a way out. We want to go in with as good a deal as we can possibly get and want it to work. So we still got more work to do. This is just one step, is to, you know, get ready for town meeting, do what we promised town meeting, but then roll up our sleeves and actually see if we can get an agreement done and get the finances worked out as far as the construction goes.
I think Al and Sam have done an enormous amount of fabulous work looking at this, but it is a new thing, right? And I'd like to sort of see what the organizational chart is for the boards or the companies or whatever they are that are doing the other recs. Do they have six...
And you will. We're not voting on anything tonight. This is just to have, get ready for town meeting.
I can send you a draft, I can send you the copy of the IMA that we signed last time that spells out the whole organizational structure.
And we worked hard on that. I mean, our town council was involved in that.
That was a good four, five minutes.
We probably commented more on that than the other two towns.
Yeah. And that one actually follows a state template. So there are others that use that template as well. There are some that don't. But that would give you a good idea of what others are doing.
I think it would be helpful.
Yeah.
So is that it for the moment? We're going to hear from the chiefs in a second, so you may have more questions. Andrew?
Well, so, you know, one question I've heard people ask before, and I don't know really how rel... I don't think this question's particularly relevant to the decision about whether to join a rec or not, is, you know, we spent a lot of money to build this new public safety building. And you got a certain amount of square footage in the building, which was built out for the dispatch operation just for Southborough. Is that a reason to keep doing what we're doing as opposed to? I think it's something that's just not relevant, basically, that...
There's something in...
That was about 10 years ago or eight years ago.
Realistically, if the rec options had been available 10 years ago, we should have made this decision 10 years ago. What you're describing is something that in economics is called the fallacy of sunk costs. And, you know, we have that space. I have no doubt that we will eventually find some other use for that space.
And I can tell you, from being on the committee that built that building, we never once discussed not putting dispatch there. It was never, ever on the table.
Sam, what do you think?
Again, I second Al's comment about fallacy of sunk costs. Very famous and very accurate economic principle. So you look at where you go from now, and this one, to me, is...
That's right. Can't help what you've already spent. It's not relevant.
A lot of things I'd like to replay in my own life, but you can't go back. So you've got to deal with what you have now.
Andrew, anything else?
No, I just thought that it would be useful to bring up because I've participated in several of these meetings now. This is a question that comes up. It's one that we should be prepared to address at town meeting on the 30th.
Absolutely. And it will come up, I'm sure.
Okay, now, I'm being slightly facetious here. Kevin Miller's here, so I know of several groups in town, committees, et cetera, boards, that have no space anyplace, and they really need space. Now, anyway, we've got, we've got room in schools, whatever. We are going to find everybody's space, so they need to, but there's space, right?
We may be able to put a couple of extra cells in the public safety building.
Okay, I'm being facetious. So, Andrew, anything else for the moment?
No.
Okay. So I don't have anything else for the moment. I'd like to next bring up the chiefs and let them express what they, what they think about Al's presentation, your thoughts, et cetera. You know, Chief Puntini is fairly new to Southborough. However, he came from Foxborough, where he has seen this in action. So he knows what a regional communication center looks like and acts like. Chief Newell has been with us from the beginning as far as trying to consider this. So this is, as Al said, been going on for a while. So we definitely need to hear from each of you.
So you want to start first, Chief Newell?
Sure. Is this, yeah, this is working. So this has been a long process. And this, the committee that was put together did a lot of hard work, a lot of visitations to rec centers, a lot of very thorough research into the topic. It's come to the point where a lot of these, a lot of surrounding towns, a lot of towns throughout Massachusetts are moving towards recs. When we initially started, there weren't as many as there are now that are moving towards recs. And I feel that Southborough, if we do not at least look into this, go forward with this, we could be left behind. And that includes police departments that I thought would never join recs, that are now discussing joining recs at this point in time. It is a very difficult job. The individuals that do this job are tremendous people. They're tremendous professionals, and I have the utmost respect for them. And that's going to be the difficult part of this whole process, is, again, dispatch falls under the police chief. And, you know, overseeing this operation has been challenging. But when you work with professionals, it has also been easy. But we are having a hard time filling positions. And, you know, if we do have a rec, the hiring, the whole process itself of onboarding, offboarding, is handled by that executive director. And, you know, having a say, I feel, is definitely important in the operations itself. And that, you know, if we're not happy with something that's happening at the rec, I think having a voice in quality control is very important as well. And that's why, you know, with working with Westborough, we would be a part of that process of developing the IMA. So those are things that I would look for in the rec itself. So that's where I'm at at this point.
I think it's important, if I were sitting in the audience at town meeting, and I had this in front of me, to vote to recommend that we go forward. It's not a non-binding, it's not a binding vote, but we do want town meeting to weigh in. We said we'd come back, we want their opinion, right? I would think that it'd be important to my vote to know what each of you think, which you'll be able to talk that night, and to know that you really do support it at this point. You do think it's the right thing to do. And I started with you, chief, because I would characterize you as consummate team player always, but a little concerned at the very first, and concerned about certain things, the dark station, your people, et cetera. But that it looks like, if I had to characterize you, that you have now progressed to the point that you may have a little bit different opinion than you did maybe two years ago. But I do think it's important that you guys are going to tell me and say, "Yeah, we support this," or "We don't," if that's what it is. So, anyway, you don't say that tonight. I've got more to talk about as far as details go. But I do think your opinion is going to be much more valuable than the select board that night as far as what you think we should do.
I agree. I mean, we are a major part of it. It's going to be an instrumental part of our, both of our operations. And yet, it's, you know, I kind of did come on to this while the car was already moving, you know? And it was one of those things where I had to quickly catch up. And then, you know, the personal connections I have with my dispatchers, you know, the friendships and everything, that's all there, that's all a part of it. And it still weighs heavily on me. I'm just being completely honest about that. But it's at the point now, I feel, you know, I think with this recommendation, we're heading in the right direction.
Okay, thank you. Andrew, welcome.
Thank you. Pretty much echo what Chief Newell says about all of his concerns, and also Al and Sam, the concerns of public safety. Our dispatchers do a fabulous job, but for the most part, there's only one in that room at any given time. And, you know, to your point, Al, you know, the building fire, they're few and far between, but, you know, significant when they happen. What happens every day are medical emergencies. And a dispatcher is required to give lifesaving instructions to somebody while they're trying to get us out the door. With only one person in the room, something has to give. You know, they can't do both those jobs effectively. It's just impossible for one person to do that. It's just impossible for one person to do that. And looking at these regional dispatch systems, being able to get into the ground floor with Westboro, I just think is something that it's tough, it's tough to, it's tough to ignore. You know, if, I feel like we're fortunate where we have that type of opportunity in not, not, not forced to go into a rec that's already established, where we have to adopt their ways, where they may have been operating that way for five, 10-plus years. We're able to get in early and actually influence, influence change in how the system's going to run.
Thank you both very much. You may want to stay here and see, you know, what comes up. So you actually may get questions asked of you. So the third person I want to hear from before we open up the public is, and where is he? Where's Mr.?
Right there.
Southern, I don't, oh, there he is, sorry. Can you come up and just talk to us about your experience? You can go to the microphone here too, if you want to, whichever way, whichever one you're more comfortable at. So some of us know who you are, not everybody, so kind of reintroduce yourself and your background, so you understand why I wanted you to come up here.
Sure, Will. Good evening, everybody. My name is Blair Sutherland. I live at 139 Parkerville Road. And my background is in public safety telecommunications. I'm the retired telecommunications director from the state police. I was with the department for 20 years. And previous to that, I served in the 911 Commission as a staff member. And I started my career at Boston EMS, where I was a dispatcher and an EMT. So my entire career has been focused on public safety communications. I guess what I would like to just say pretty briefly is I applaud the work done by the board. Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Stivers in particular, you know, this most recent presentation really, in my view, hits on so many things that will help clarify the issue, not only to your fellow select board members, but also, I think, to the town. I think it's very worthwhile to keep this discussion in front of the town and recognizing that doing something like moving to a regional dispatch center brings with it lots of opportunity and a whole lot of angst as well. In my experience, we, the state police operate three very large regional communication centers. If that map was back up on the, on the screen, I could show you big blotches of, of color that represent the state police communities. And working with the towns in general is always an act of compromise, right? And I think that's what the board has recognized, that there needs to be an opportunity to work with the surrounding towns. At the moment, we're talking about Westboro. Then I, I think this is an opportunity to continue that discussion. All of that said, Chief Newell, you know, mentioned, you know, the whole notion, a really, a really true notion of what it means for our current dispatchers, who are absolutely the first first responders. I can tell you I have tremendous respect for people who do the job, recognize how difficult it is, and also understand that in a small community, when there really is only one dispatcher, you have to do everything at once, at the same time. And while we're able to do that here in Southborough, it's certainly not easy. And my view is I recognize what I think is an exposure for the town by not having additional personnel available to do the job the best way possible. All of that said, I, I would, I would just say, I think the, the board is moving in the right direction by providing detailed information. It's good to know that, you know, that there is a, you know, a logical way of looking at this. And something that both Sam and Al said, and just sort of coming at this straight on and dissuading ourselves of the notion that this is going to be a money-saving opportunity. I don't know that it's going to be a money-saving opportunity. I think that there's an opportunity to say that the costs are not going to increase substantially for the town right away. There certainly, in the first couple of years, the state provides all kinds of assistance in getting a rec up and running. And indeed, the grants provide an opportunity to do some technology upgrades that the town might not, you know, given every other priority that, you know, is in front of this board and so many of the other committee, committees. There may be an opportunity to do some technology upgrades, both with CAD, radio systems, you know, any number of things that tie into communications and to the, the real-life operations of the rec as it applies to those public safety first responders in the field who have radio gear and technology that, you know, that ties back into the whole notion of communications. I guess in closing, the other piece, I would just like to reaffirm the notion that having a rec and having the professionals in one room for multiple communities, getting information in real time about not just their community, but about their surrounding communities, that goes to the whole notion of situational awareness, and so greatly increases, increases the opportunity for really effective mutual aid, whether that's calling additional law enforcement in or one of the regional Lex in because something has happened in town, or when the, the local, when our Southborough Police or Fire are needed somewhere else in, in order to provide that mutual aid. It doesn't come as a surprise, and indeed, the telecommunications who are there already have a good grasp on what's happening. So I, I guess, I, I, I think that the, the town and the board are headed in the right direction by continuing to look at this, and I applaud the good work that's been done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy? Could I add one point to what Mr. Sutherland said?
Yes, you can.
One, one thing that impressed me, as I've visited several recs now, is this seems to me to be actually a separate profession, management of regional communication systems. And it, like many things, I think, sort of grew up out of the, the police and fire departments as something that needed to be done, and so they took this responsibility on. Given where technology is today and how technology is evolving, it sure seems to me, as I've talked to these folks, that the executive directors are people who actually have a career of regional communications. And there's a lot going on nationally that you need to keep, keep up with, and technology and whatever. So it seems to me it makes good sense, we get a better product if we separate it as a separate entity that has this as its only focus, and make sure that we're always keeping up with new developments in terms of this technology and these processes. So I think it just reinforces for me that we're better served having real professionals focused on this alone and working across communities gives us the depth that we need to respond effectively to complex events. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Anyone on the board have a question for Blair before we open this up? Okay, so this is a public forum, so we want to see if there's anyone here that has any questions, any comments, any criticisms, or in the Zoom audience before.
No hands up, Zoom.
Can you come to the microphone and introduce yourself?
Michael Nordstrom, 14 Meeting House Lane, Southborough. I just had a question about the financial, financial piece of it. So essentially, moving to the rec is you're actually, you're purchasing a service, really? That's how, that's what, how it sounds like it's described? And then some examples were, were like provided there about just, you know, if there is a significant increase in the costs that the rec observes, will they be passed on to the town? But my understanding is usually when you have a service that you're, you're buying, it's a stated service and a stated fee, and then you build a structure, a fee structure, and a cap per year that you have, that they can go, they can increase over time? Is that how the contract will be set up with a cap? Or are we exposed financially if there's a significant capital cost increase to the rec that we have to then absorb?
We've used a state template for that, for the one that we signed previously, and that, that does not have a cap in it. There was the rec develops a budget and then allocates the costs proportionally to the towns that are participating in it, and the towns are obligated to pay that assessment. And that's where we had some conversation around, can we actually get out of it if we are not happy about the assessment? And the place where we left it, I think, was there was a one-year or 180-day, I can't remember, option to terminate at our discretion if we got into one of those situations. We also actually had protection on the capital side, so if the rec decided to spend $50 million on new technology that we thought was inappropriate, the towns actually, in the one that we saw originally, and I would hope we would see again, would have the opportunity to approve that or not. And if the towns didn't approve it, then the rec would have to come back with an alternate plan. So, but there is some exposure, certainly. But at least, given the trade-offs, personally, it seemed to me that was a reasonable protection for us and offset by the value of the safety issue in terms of getting increased safety from the process.
This is a little bit like the situation you described, but not entirely. It's, you know, I, I wish there were, you know, companies out there that were competitively offering this service, but, but there aren't. We would have the option in the future if we are dissatisfied with the, the costs of, of joining a different rec. And as I mentioned, there's another rec that's next door, and they appear to have good scale. So we will be appointing a member of the board, so there is accountability there. And, you know, we have to hold our, our chiefs, who would be on the operating committees, accountable as well, just as they are accountable today for their own budgets. And, you know, there's, if we see things are going the wrong way, we have to say so to the, the people that we send as our representatives to this, this entity. But yes, it's, it's, it is a risk point. There's, there's no, no sugar coat in any of this.
Kathy, could I add on to what you've said, Alan? Mr.?
Nordstrom.
Nordstrom, okay. Here's the other point. What I'm hearing so far is if there is a $50 million bond that's being floated, our option is to withdraw from the rec? That seems like it's kind of either or, isn't it?
There's going to be more to, there's going to be more controls over that. $50 million is not going to happen without.
That was actually, Kathy, towns could, any town could actually veto that one, as a matter of fact. That was in the original language. So that language, I thought, was pretty strong, and we will hopefully get something like that in what we signed.
Yeah, so we just need to get the IMA negotiated and then bring it back. Because that's what we're going to be voting on, Marguerite, is the actual IMA, when it's ready to be voted on.
So if you had to summarize, thank you for all that, that information. So you have to had to summarize it. I was hoping this would go down a path of it would reduce our financial risk as a town, but it sounds like it would not reduce. But I'm not hearing that it would increase our financial risk necessarily. Other than you're in more of a shared group, so you have less control potentially?
I think that if things work well, it's a big caveat, of course, we will be getting better, deeper coverage for a price that is similar to what we paid for single dispatch. But if we want to go with and have deeper coverage here in our community by having two dispatchers, then relative to that scenario, I think we will save, save significantly on the operating costs.
Right, I guess, yeah, I'm, I'm clear on that. I guess my, I should have been more specific. It was more to the point of unanticipated, significantly increased costs, and how that, how that would be a more, more or less of a financial risk in the situation where we are, that we're in currently. But it sounds like it's about even.
I, I don't think so. I don't think we're making this piece of it clear. When Sam said, and Al said that we think we're going to spend what we're spending now, they meant the year we just ended. At last town meeting, we added room for two new dispatchers in the fiscal year '25 budget. Now, it's not going to all get spent because they're not hired, but it's in the budget. In this case, we are talking, you know, so we talk about sunk cost and how you just need to get over them. You also, you know, yes, we may not going to save many of this, but we're going to spend less than we might spend otherwise in the future if we have to double the amount of people here. So there is less financial risk of doing the regional than what we're going to probably have to do locally if we don't go this way.
And Kathy, the other point here too is that if you actually go from one dispatcher to two dispatchers 24/7, you've got to hire between four and five additional bodies to do that coverage for 24/7. So it's a very highly leveraged expansion there in terms of cost.
And also, one concrete cost that you likely would avoid by joining the rec is within a certain number of years, we would need a major upgrade to the technology in the dispatch center. And if you go the rec route, that would be picked up by the state. And if you're not, and if you don't, that would be a, a large amount shown on a Capitol article at town meeting.
It's coming pretty fast.
I think in the near term, which is three to five years, I think this is financially advantageous to the town. But I wouldn't want to make promises beyond the three to five years. You know, I think, you know, the state giveth and the state taketh away. You know, we, we can, for those of you who know, there's something called the Quinn Act, where, you know, the state was going to pay for educating police officers. And they offered very generous terms until they didn't offer them anymore. But we still had, so we would be wise in our planning not to assume that the state will be munificent forever.
And we're not. We, we know that, okay. So Michael, welcome. We're going to talk to you again in a minute. So Michael is the current chair of EDC, in case everyone has met him. Okay, so I'm trying to be considerate of people who I know are here for certain things. The discussion with advisory is going to start with discussion with EDC. That discussion's going to take a pretty long time. So I'm going to put two things in front of that real quick. Hopefully, everybody's okay with that, so that the people involved can, they don't want to stay, they don't, they don't have to.
Are we done with this now?
Yeah, well, is anybody else, Vanessa?
No, nobody in the audience, no hand.
Okay, so yes, I think we're done with this.
Declare victory and move on.
Well, and we may do this again before town meeting. We said a couple, so this may not be the end of it.
I have two other forums that I'm currently working on. The Dolmens Club and, and Southborough Access Media. And if anybody's got other forums that they'd like to discuss this in, I'd be happy to arrange it.
Okay, all right, but thank you for doing this, this was good. Okay, so let's, we're going to flip. We're going to do the stewardship committee discussion next. I think Joyce, I thought, sorry, there she is.
This is the same as in the packet?
I didn't, I didn't think so. I think the packet was your language, I'm not sure.
Yeah, the packet was not Joyce's and Melissa Danza's suggestion. So I, I've got theirs in front of me too. Okay, so this topic is one that we may or may not complete tonight, we'll, we'll see. So we've been trying to work with various committees, including stewardship, to help them be more effective in what they do. So one thing we've all agreed on is to reduce their committee from seven to five. And we can do that, that's not a town meeting vote, this is an ad hoc committee, so we can do that. That's not an issue. Then we've been talking about other changes to their charge to make it more clear, because their charge is not very clear. So Sam has met with stewardship, right, Sam?
Joyce, yeah.
Okay. And Melissa Danza has weighed in, because of course, the main reason to be for stewardship is to take care of the Breakneck Hill Conservation Land, which is under the care of CONCOM. So we're here tonight maybe to try to clean up this charge and agree on what it should be going forward. But every time I think I've got it, I've got another question, so that's why I'm not sure we're going to get it tonight. Yeah, you know, you read it, then you go, I didn't think about that. So where we are right now is we've agreed to reduce it to five. It is an ad hoc committee. It's not a standing committee. It's got members that are required to come from Open Space and CONCOM. And the other three are the other five before tonight were at-large, appointed by select board. One-year terms because it's an ad hoc committee. So I'm just going through out some questions for you, and Sam, feel free to interject here. Is, I, I don't know why it's an ad hoc committee, so let me just throw that one out to begin with. And this is, I didn't even think about this till today, when Joyce and I were going back and forth on email. The protection of the land is permanent. It's Breakneck Hill Conservation Land, it's not going anywhere, right? It's ours, we need to protect it. The purpose of this committee was to protect it, so I'm not sure what the reason for the committee to be ad hoc to begin with was. And I'm wondering if anyone else understands why it was ad hoc.
I don't.
Freddie? And don't forget to introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm Freddie Gillespie. I'm the Open Space Preservation Commission representative on the stewardship committee. And along with Joyce, I was one of the original founding, well, we weren't the founding members, but we were originally appointed. And it was because of the work of the Open Space Preservation Commission that the committee was set up. And the original reason for it is we had been declared the worst bittersweet infestation in Metro West. We've got a, working towards a grant through the NRCS. And the initial, like, emergency was to clean the bittersweet up and to manage that grant. So, it was thinking of getting that job done, which was a huge job. So, I don't think anyone was thinking long-term at the time, because it's like you got a fire, you gotta put the fire out. And we were just thinking about getting the fire out. And then afterwards, working with the consultants, we had Mass Audubon, and we've had others over the years. We have been praised for our stick-to-it-iveness, because many of these other projects, they get cleaned up. In five years, you come back and it's a mess. And we are still at a high percentage of the original invasive, of the bittersweet clean. I mean, you have to manage it all the time, but we are still at a very high percentage of keeping that at bay and eradicating. Of course, new invasives come in, but, and we have our charge, which was always to do management of the land, because after we did the clear cut and the herbicide, it was like a bomb went off, really. And we had, we had done planning ahead of time. And, you know, it's, it's not something you walk away with. But I think it was dealing with an emergency right at the beginning.
But Joyce, is there any reason to think this committee doesn't need to, I mean, you're not gonna get, come to us one day and say, "We're done," right?
Right.
I mean, so if the intent is to continue this work in perpetuity, because there's always gonna be something to be done to protect there, then I don't know why we wouldn't consider making this a standing committee, period, with three-year terms and not this one year, having to continue to reappoint. The other thing that Sam had, Sam Cyrus had brought forth and had talked to them about is, again, in an effort to try to help them, make sure they've already got a full committee, not make it so restrictive. So, instead of having one person appointed from Open Space, one person from CONCOM, have five people that were just at-large. I can tell you for a fact that Melissa Danza has talked about this with CONCOM. They do not want that. They want it to stay the way it is, and so does, and don't let me put words in your mouth if I say it wrong. I've talked to Joyce, and they also do not want that to change. They wanted to continue having one person appointed from Open Space, one person appointed from CONCOM, and then three at-large appointed members. Correct? So, that's what they want. We don't have to agree, but that's what they want. So, if we can get to an agreement tonight on what the charge should look like, the revised charge, and whether we want to make this committee a standing committee or not, then we may be done. But that's what we've got to get done to solve.
Are you suggesting we put this on the warrant for the special town meeting, potentially?
Yeah, I guess. Although, I kinda hate to add another, we could do it, we can, you know, we could do this in the spring. We don't have to do it.
Yeah. I guess, you know, if anything broke, why fix it? And this is a committee that is working as an ad hoc committee.
That's fine, too.
And we're already got plenty of work to do to clean up the draft warrant that we've got right now. I think, I'm fine with the
Ad hoc, one-year appointments?
With the language here of the
One, I'm not sure you've got the right language. Hold on. So,
It's the language I handed out.
Okay, so, you just gave it to two people, right? I've got it.
Oh, did it, was there not enough?
Pass it down here.
The one that Joyce passed around. This is
Yeah, I think it could be clear, I don't know if it stays ad hoc until it goes to town meeting to become something different. I think there was legit confusion about where that one-year terms language is. So, it could be maybe more clear.
Well, see, when I saw that, I went, oh, of course, because it's ad hoc. That's why it's one-year term. Ad hoc committees are supposed to be temporary. So, that's why it's one-year term. But it does sound like there's an appetite in this group to put it on the special town meeting warrant, September thirtieth. Doesn't mean we can't put it on the normal annual town warrant that's bigger and has more stuff on it. We are just trying, you know, we want to have a special town meeting last one night, not two. So, I think as long as you guys are fine, you know, the way you're operating, then we probably just leave it alone. But do update this charge.
And again, I started out with five at-large, and I talked with Joyce and others about it. And I guess my preference is five at-large, but there's a strong feeling that this language is better, so I'm okay with it, so.
Thank you for that support.
I'm okay with this charge, too. So, I'm ready to support this and continue as ad hoc, and we'll deal with the ad hoc issue maybe for spring validating if.
Okay, so Joyce, you don't wanna just read what your and Melissa's recommendation are for the charge, just to make sure we've got the same thing in front of us?
Sure. The charge for the ad hoc Southborough Stewardship Committee is to support the Conservation Commission by providing conservation-based stewardship of the Breakneck Hill Conservation Land, balancing multiple conservation and passive recreational uses. The stewardship shall consist of five Southborough residents comprised of one representative of and as voted by the Conservation Commission, one representative of and as voted by the Open Space Preservation Commission, and three at-large members appointed for one-year terms. All five members are to be appointed by the select board.
Does everybody have that in front of them? That's what I've got. Got that? Okay. All right. So, see, some things are easy, right? Okay, so, everybody okay with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, my preference in general is at-large, as well as Sam's. I think we have too many interlocking community, but this is not the hill I want to die on.
And I will say, I told Freddie this day, Joyce, I call it two out of five days, go on Breakneck Hill Road from my office. I take a ride on Willem to get to, you know, where the post office is. And boy, does it look pretty right now, as far as, it's looking from the road, just glancing over and seeing the color. I mean, that color is beautiful. So, it looks great.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And I'm happy to provide our rationale for those designated seats, because obviously we work closely
We all agree. So, I don't think, you know, when you won.
I would probably support the same people, but it's just a matter of principle that I think we have too many reserved spaces, and that we aren't having an open enough opportunity.
Well, these two at least make a lot of sense as far as where they come from, so.
So, I move that we approve the language for the stewardship charge that is supported by the stewardship committee and that Joyce gave us at our meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Okay, the next thing I'm gonna move up is something that's really, really exciting. It's in, it's on the consent agenda, but I'm gonna move it up because she's in the audience. So, Vanessa, can you bring over Caitlin? Is Bill here? Okay, and bring over Bill Kundav.
He's too, yeah.
The appointment of the engineer for DPW. Somebody's gonna pull her up. She's here. Okay. So, Bill, are you there? Are you almost there?
Not yet.
Okay. It's what?
There's the motorcycle.
He's coming.
Bill and Caitlin are now here, but muted.
So, Caitlin's here. Hi, Bill.
Hi, sorry about that.
Nothing to be sorry about. So, why don't we turn this over to you, and you introduce Caitlin to us?
Sure thing. Oh, you got my, I'm not sure why my motorcycle is shown.
That's your best side, right?
Yeah, right. So, as you know, we've been looking for quite a bit while for someone to fill our civil engineer position. That was approved at the last annual town meeting. We've been looking since the fiscal year began. We had interviewed about twenty candidates and pared that down to a number of interviews. And of those interviews, Caitlin was by far the most qualified candidate and best suited for the position. She has worked for RH White for the past four years. She's an assistant superintendent there. And she has her bachelor's of science and master's degree in civil engineering from University of Hartford, as well as a business degree from university, universe, an MBA from University of Hartford also. She has ample experience with field inspection and quality control with RH White, experience with doing estimating and bid document review to ensure that she has compliance, that RH White complied with contract documents. So, the interview team, which consisted of myself, Vanessa, and Karina, all agreed that she was very qualified. So, we extended offer through Mark contingent upon the select board ratification.
That's great. Caitlin, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. So, welcome. We are really happy to be doing this tonight. Be very happy for Mr. Kundav. He really wanted to get this position filled. And I think he's got quite a list of projects that he is going to get you involved in very soon. You're not gonna worry about having anything to do. I think you'll enjoy working in Southborough. I think the projects are gonna be interesting. And I feel like we have truly accomplished them by adding this position and giving Mr. Kundav the help that he definitely needs.
Yeah, great. It was great to meet the team and go with Bill around the town of Southborough and, you know, see what's in store for me. So, I appreciate the time today. And Bill, I appreciate your kind words.
When is your first day?
Still TBD, probably mid to late September.
Okay, good. Sooner the better. Anybody having questions for you, Bill or Caitlin?
No questions. Great bio, great experience, and delighted to have you on board. Lot to do.
Okay, Sam, you wanna make the motion to appoint Caitlin?
Sure. I'll move that we appoint Caitlin Carvillo as civil engineer in the Public Works Department.
Second.
All in favor? So, Caitlin, that was unanimous vote, if you can see us. So, thank you for coming tonight. And thank you, Bill.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Ready. Okay, so, the next thing we're gonna talk is, we're gonna talk to EDC. So, we've got a group here. So, Michael, you wanna come on up? And Julie, you wanna join us? And Karen, you wanna come up closer?
Advisory.
Yeah. And then, at the same time, Andrew, you wanna call the advisory committee to order? There's Claire. Okay, Claire, come on up.
[inaudible]
So, who do you need brought over?
Adam.
Adam? Adam Nodif?
Hi.
Tim Martel.
Tim Martel.
Advisory committee order at seven fifty-two.
Larry Sandberg is here.
Okay, so, one, two, three, four. And so, before we get started, Andrew, you wanna introduce your newest member of advisory?
I'd like to introduce our newest member of advisory, well-known to everybody. But Barry Rubinstein has joined advisory, and we finally have seven members for the first time since I've been on advisory.
Really?
Yeah.
Huh. I didn't think it was that bad. So, Sam, unfortunately, you know Barry's had to resign from the cable committee.
I saw that. Very disappointed, but he's gone, gone on to a better place.
He feels like his job is done.
And as the new guy, he gets to be chair of advisory, right? Andrew?
That's what Andrew's hoping.
Going back to cable.
That was, Andrew's hoping. Okay. All right. So, as everyone knows, we have a warrant article for the special town meeting to make the EDC coordinator a full-time position, which we've never had a full-time position at EDC as long as I can remember, right, Julie?
Never.
So, why don't we have this group introduce yourself in the microphone, so who's listening at home knows who's sitting here, starting with Michael?
Sure. Michael Nordstrom, fourteen meeting house lane, EDC chairman. I've been with the committee for about a year, a little over a year. So, a lot of, a lot of learning. So, that's where I'm at, at this point, so.
I'm sure you're a fast learner, so. And you've got lots of good help here. Okay, so Karen is also on EDC. So, you wanna introduce yourself next?
Karen England. I've been a member of EDC for two years. Looking forward to doing a lot more projects. I guess the last two years, we've actually been mostly fighting on getting a full-time EDC coordinator, and we haven't been able to do a lot of the work that we used to do. So, we're looking forward to hopefully getting this passed.
Okay, Julie?
Hi, Julie Connolly. I'm a former member of the EDC. I was actually on the original EDC, signed up for, I think, a three-year commitment that turned into ten years, and stepped down about a year ago. And I was called back for this special mission because I was part of the original group that brought on a part-time coordinator, and had been part of many discussions over the years as to why we think a full-time coordinator would be appropriate.
Thank you. Claire?
Claire Reynolds, also a former EDC member. And I learned everything that I know about the EDC from Julie. So, I didn't put in as long of a time as Julie has. But I'm here also to speak in support of the EDC full-time person.
Okay, so, the select board has already taken a preliminary vote to support a position being full-time, so five-zero. The advisory committee has not taken a position nor have discussed it. So, that's why we wanted, you know, you guys to talk about this position, why it's important to you, while they were here, so they can start thinking about the position they're gonna take at town meeting. So, Michael, as far as who you want to talk, you know, you may want to turn it over to anybody else. We've also got Leah Emerson in the audience, who is the current part-time EDC coordinator. So, she's here, too, for questions that people may have. So, Michael, who do you want to?
Yeah, maybe, Julia, if you wouldn't mind just giving a little bit of a history of where we started and where we're at now? Sure. And I'll do my best from memory, without the benefit of notes here. But the EDC was started in 2013. And I want to say, it took about three years of operation, I think it was 2016, where we were awarded a part-time EDC coordinator, nineteen and a half hours a week. We had, we've gone, I think we went through three. I think only two were official employees, and one was a contract employee. Claire can correct me if I'm wrong. All were wonderful assets. All, we had great relationships. We only just seemed to be able to drive them out of town, because one moved to North Carolina and one moved to Tokyo. So, both are great. And now, we have Leah, who is our fourth part-time coordinator. What we have found consistently is that they've all had much more work to do than was allotted in the nineteen and a half hours. A lot of the work of the EDC is relationship building, community building, getting out, speaking, and meeting with, with the businesses in town. We've always had a robust list of things we've wanted to do and not enough time to do it. We've recognized some of, you know, the original mission of Economic Development Committee was to stabilize the residential tax base by making sure that we had a robust and healthy business community that served as both part of the tax base, but also to provide services, jobs, amenities for our residents. And that's been, that's been the mission. And as part of that, we've, we've sort of identified the roadblocks to that, some of them being the infrastructure in town, particularly zoning issues in town. And as you all know, we've worked really hard to make some zoning changes in the downtown area. And I'm a very, very firm believer that those, that similar work is really vital to happen on Route Nine in particular, as well as in other areas of town. That takes a huge amount of effort. I also, part of the infrastructure issues, as everybody is aware, is wastewater management. There are opportunities for that. We've spent a lot of time investigating how other towns and communities have, who have older infrastructure have been able to bring wastewater management into town. All these things take, obviously, time and money. And one thing that we've been, had some really good success with over the past years, has been getting some grant money to do some of these projects. It allowed us to hire a consultant that helps us to get the zoning downtown done. It allowed us to, to investigate infrastructure issues for, as far as wastewater management. And Claire, the number, I believe, is, we, over about four years period, I believe, we brought in three hundred twenty-three thousand dollars in grant funding. So, we think that's pretty significant. And we know that there's a lot more money available. There's still money available through federal and state programs, through the infrastructure bills. That window's not gonna be open forever. And Claire, in particular, has made really incredible efforts to secure some of these grants, to follow some of these grants. These grants also take a lot of collaboration with other boards and committees. And again, that's something that takes time. that's something that takes time, and Leah does not have the time to do all of that work. So, I really think that we've been able to show a return on investment. Our peer communities all have full-time economic development coordinators, and, you know, I think that it's something that we're falling behind. We've been saying this for years, we're continuing to fall behind as we face increased, you know, year-over-year increased taxes. I know you all have your ear to the ground in town, and that's what you hear complaints of a lot. We have some big projects coming up that many people in town want to support, particularly the Neri School, but there is a lot of concern about the cost. We've got to get back to the basics of balancing out the residential tax burden, and I think that this is one of the many pieces that is required to do that.
Thank you, Julie. Claire?
Can you hand this to Al and have him pass it down? Well, the one sheet of paper is going around. What I want to do is make sure that everybody understands the finances of the EDC, because there is a lot of misconception. There are things that I've heard during meetings about the EDC, and it's just not understood totally in terms of what it does. So what I put together was the amount of money over the last nine years. So if you look at the first column that you're looking at, there is a particular fiscal year, and how much was requested or approved, so to speak, at town meeting. The actual column is what was actually spent by the EDC. Now, you'll notice that it fluctuates. Some, one year, we didn't really have a coordinator. We had like a coordinator for about a half a year, and I think that was the time when Marika moved. So what I did was, I listed the amount of money that was actually returned, because if people, if you just look at how much was allocated, it doesn't give you a true picture. So that's what the returned amount was. Now, the key thing to realize with this is that in the actual column, as listed further down, the EDC was the committee that was funding these grants. Two of the grants that I was involved with required a 25% match. So on the first $50,000 grant that was awarded, that was 12.5, which came from the EDC budget. And this was a combination, as Julie mentioned, it paid for a zoning consultant, a lawyer, and everybody that you needed to get the zoning passed for the downtown district. Last one, which was the Route 9 business corridor, which was the wastewater, was a $45,000 grant, and that was actually overmatched, which was using money for a second study to follow on the study when we came in under budget. The grant was for $45,000. It came in under budget at $30,000. The state was kind of like Amazon, you know, they didn't want you to return the money because it was more difficult. So, in the letter that I sent to them, I said, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't say, if we can keep the money and extend the time of the grant, we will have a better product. And that's exactly what we got, and that is the latest, the action plan. All these documents are completed. So, the point that I'm trying to make is, is that in the actuals, that is the grant funding. At some point in time, you know, it would be money that could be funded out of other, the consulting money from other budgets, if we were doing it together, because they're budgets, they're grants that satisfy everybody. So that's just a brief summary of what has happened over the last nine years, the grant awards, and then if you, you look at the actuals and the awards, the money is definitely there, you know? It's the old, it takes money to make money.
Do, does everyone agree that one of the jobs of, if we make this 40 hours, is to continue to pursue grants as much as possible, that that will continue to be part of that job, looking for grants, trying to get the grants, et cetera? I mean, you see this, you made money. You actually cost less than what the grants are, and what department does that, right? I don't think there's anyone. Is there any doubt in your mind that Leah will, can spend easily 40 hours on doing what she wants to do, that she will have no trouble filling out that 40 hours, doing the things that we all need, we know needs to be done? We need more business in this town. We're losing businesses. Who we lost this summer? Tommaso's, closed. Bowler Engineering, gone to Westboro. The nicest two, off the top of my head, there's probably, there could be more.
Kazz left to go tomorrow, bro.
Who did?
Kazz, 2:50 turnpike.
Yep. So, I mean, we are just bleeding businesses. We've got, I really think it's an emergency. We've now got an 85% residential tax base. It's gone up from 80 to 85 the last few years. Some of it's COVID-related, but the entire tax burden is pretty much falling on houses. And we need to expand that base so that we can spread it out over a bigger tax base. I mean, that's, you know, you hear split tax rates. Split tax rate's not going to accomplish that. We've got to get more businesses that want to come here, that we then can spread that denominator out more. So I wanted to do this for a long time. Select Board has been split, so we didn't get it done. So I think now, we've really got to bring it forth to town meeting, let town meeting decide, but I think make a robust case that we have really got to do something to try to retain the business we have and bring in new, good, quality businesses into this town.
I just want to add, I, thank you, Kathy. I obviously completely agree, and I do think you're right. We're at an emergency. We're not going to get town support for the projects that are really important to us, like the school and lots of other things, community center, senior center, all that stuff that we want to do. It's going to be a really, really tough sell for people who have already carried such a burden that seems to only increase every year. So, I agree that it's an emergency. I think, you know, in conjunction with this role, the primary part of that is that we really need to revitalize zoning, because the reason businesses aren't here is because it's very, very difficult to come here. And the reason businesses aren't here is because our zoning infrastructure is not set up for any sort of modern business scheme. There's no mixed use available. There's no buy right available. One of the businesses that we lost this year, Stronger Uprising, is a gym that was on Route 9 downtown. I happen to be a member, and they, they wanted to stay in Southborough. Their base of customers and clients are in Southborough, and they, you know, Leah was phenomenal. She did everything she could to work with them. They came to the town, and there was, it's not that there weren't options available, it was that every option was too difficult. And by comparison, they, and they literally thought they were going to have to fold, and it was two young guys, diverse business, you know, very successful, great resource and amenity for the town, lots of people who worked here use them, lots of people who live here use them. They went to Westborough and got in in two weeks. Two weeks, just on, just, you know, right on the Southborough border. So luckily, they were able to keep a lot of their client base, but that's the difference. Nothing could be starker than that. It would have taken them six months to open a business here in Southborough.
Olympus left my building, and then one next door went to Westborough. You know, they got a tip deal with Westborough, and they left, so they're gone. They're not coming back. Okay, so Karen, Michael, do you guys want to add anything? I wanted to hear from these two because of their long history with EDC, but please, you guys are the current members of EDC. Do you want to add anything before the board?
Sure.
Ask some questions here?
Sure. I just, you know, I look at this as, you know, obviously, all the things that have been stated, I agree with, you know, and the big thing is, you know, increasing the competitiveness of the town, and from a commercial standpoint, and then also, you know, what we can do, and as look, so the town looks at, EDC has an asset. I think that's kind of, that's, that's a problem right now, that we need to market ourselves better in that way, and doing that is actually doing the work. And that's, part of that is going to the businesses, takes a lot of time, going to each individual business, the coordinator, but also members, making the relationships with these businesses, so they say, oh, there's somebody here that's supporting us, you know, that our existing business, also if we want to move, somebody else is supposed to come in. I mean, the biggest, for me, the biggest success stories I ever hear is when businesses contact us, and then like Leah gets involved, and she goes and scouts all the places that they could potentially go, based upon the zoning, and sometimes arcane, the way zoning is set up, and just what would be the best fit, and then, you know, if we get a success story out of that. But that's a lot, that's a lot of work. It's a lot of work to know all that information, but that's a resource that we need to use as a town to really help that. And then we need to be marketing that, the things that we're doing, the things that Economic Development Committee is doing, I mean, the numbers speak for themselves. Obviously, we can pursue more grant opportunities. I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, make, having even enough resources to actually fully support the grant process. Certainly, more hours is going to, is going to help there, for sure. But, yeah, so I mean, there's just, there's so much more, I mean, there's so much more work that's, that can be done to be truly more effective, and then the town to look at us like, wow, that's, you know, that's really, we're really supporting the town, we're really driving competitiveness for commercial, for the town to really spread it out, the taxes, you know, around, to the residents, so.
That's great. So Andrew, you want to explain to, especially advisory, what we're trying to do with One Stop for this next year?
Yeah, so, as part of our kind of annual goal-setting exercise for the fiscal year, one of the goals that we selected, I think it's also one of the goals for Mark, for his year as town administrator, is to submit a successful application for a One Stop grant that's focused on Route 9 zoning, and I know we had, I went to the planning board along with Sam or Kathy a couple of months ago to just let them know that we were pursuing this, and I think we were able to get some kind of, at least conceptual buy-in from them about this is something that makes sense. I know that a statistic that I've been following, right, is the ratio of our commercial tax base relative to residential, and it's just been ticking in the wrong direction year after year after year. It contributes to the annual increase in residential tax burden. I think it's, I feel like people are coming around to the idea that we need to do something with this, so this is all a way where, I've had conversations with Leah about it, Leah's going to be a real resource in coordinating this, and, you know, it's going to take time. I know one thing that Marika did, and we started getting some momentum on a couple of years ago, was having kind of a regular series of meetings with Select Board and Planning Board members with local businesses, and I feel like if we made this a full-time position, we'd be able to, you know, pursue both of those things at once, you know, have a regular cycle of the business meetings while also pursuing some of these longer initiatives. It's always been a very awkward situation of this 19, 19 and a half hours. You know, basically, when Marika was here, everything I've heard was that she was working full-time, but just not getting paid for it. I think it's only fair that we have, if we have someone who's really committed to the position, is going to put in those hours, that we pay them for that, and I think of it as an investment, you know? I know that some people ask, well, have we done a study that's going to show scientifically that if we spend this additional $50,000 to bring it up to a full-time position, that we're going to see a return in commercial tax revenue, the increase, increase of that? No, we can never have a study that proves that exactly, but I think just common sense shows that what we've been doing, which is really little or nothing, isn't working, and that you see an exodus of businesses, and if we put in a little more effort and had one person whose primary responsibility day-to-day was to follow this issue, that we would make some progress.
Okay, so, Marguerite?
If I could just say one thing in addition to what Andrew said. Mark gave me a number today of the meals tax deficit that we now have, which is considerable since some...
The what tax deficit?
The meals, the meals tax.
How much less money we're getting from meals taxes now than we had in the past?
Well, I actually gave you the number for the full meals tax. I didn't give you an estimate on what we lost with Tommaso. I simply was just trying to illustrate the point that that's really a double whammy. We've lost a business, but we've also lost some revenue that we helped to fund, you know, the rest of our, rest of our operation.
Yep.
So.
Yep, so, absolute consequence of Tommaso's leaving. So that's, anything else, Marguerite? Al?
There's no question we have a crisis on our hands, you know, where, I moved to town some 28 years ago, and, you know, at that point, we had a much healthier commercial base, and, you know, I got my surprise today when I opened my new tax bill, like I suspect many of you have, and, you know, I, my taxes jumped from the 13s to the 15s, never stopped in the 14s, and, you know, we have a lot of senior citizens in town, and we are inflicting significant pain on that population, and we have, I want, I think, exceed our grasp. We're going to talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes, I think, but we need to rebuild our commercial base, and I don't think that's something we do in a year, or two, or three. And I think we absolutely have to address the zoning issue, and it needs to be essentially a clean sheet of paper and broaden into the 21st century, because we can't continue to just be dealing with, you know, the, this, a 1960s version of zoning. And I think we need to make Southborough an easier place to do business, and I think that means extending buy-right options to, for a lot more businesses and a lot more types of business, because, you know, we're sitting here at the intersection of 495 and the Mass Pike and Route 9, and we can't attract businesses to come to Southborough. We don't have a grocery store. We don't have a hardware store. We, we're losing restaurants. You know, we don't have entertainment venues. We don't, we have an industrial park that's empty, so, you know, we got to stop doing what we're doing, because it ain't working.
Sam?
I just reinforce a couple of prior comments. I mean, I look at it in fairly simple terms. I think we've got a significant long-term problem in terms of tax base, and unless we can fix that, we're headed toward continued fiscal pressure in ways that are going to create a lot of pain for many people in town, including seniors who are on fixed incomes, as a matter of fact. And so I think, as I look at the resource we have, the primary resource for fixing that is Route 9, and the question is, what can we do with Route 9? And as we've talked, zoning is one key element, and I don't think we can downplay wastewater either. Those two things, I think, are necessary to actually promote significant business growth along Route 9, and there are things that we've actually been talking about on the wastewater side, that's not a near-term solution either. But I think, I see the EDC coordinator hours increase as sort of a stopgap in some sense to say, as we work on these other things, and we'll keep pushing on them hard, I think we need to keep doing all we can with what we have now to attract and retain businesses, and I think there are a variety of things that we can do that more hours will help us do. So to me, again, as much as I loathe increasing tax rates, there are things I think that you just have to do to protect long-term interests of the town, and this is one of them in my book, so I support this.
Andrew, anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay. So Leah, I know this is probably a little awkward, we're talking about your position increasing it, but do you want to add something to what you've heard tonight?
Well, I really appreciate all of the input from my current members, as well as former members, Claire and Julie, thank you so much for coming out to support this. You know, my experience in doing the job underscores everything that has been stated thus far, both from the Select Board, as well as my committee, based on direct experience. And, you know, there's really never enough hours in the week. My week varies from week to week. One week is never quite the same as the next. You know, there's a lot of things that need to be done in the interest of relationship building, but that's also getting current with our local organizations and our regional planning agency, MAPC, as well as 495 Metro West, that does a lot of great advocacy work, and showing up for these things on behalf of Southborough and being a presence, both locally and regionally. And, you know, all of these things take time, and I can't really stress that enough. You know, I'm more than willing to do the work, but I do bump up against those 19 and a half hours more often than not, and I would really like to be able to do more to help the... than not. And I would really like to be able to do more to help the town. And so, I recognize what the issues are. I see where, you know, we could put in some work to get the collaboration and the coordination that we need, both on funding opportunities through grant pursuits, as well as, you know, working with other boards and committees, so that we all get kind of going in the same direction, and finding where we have these common interests. I think that's really where to start.
Thank you, Leah. So, I just want to say, I agree with what Al said. This is not going to be a year, and we've got the problem solved. This is going, this is a slug. It's going, we're going to have to work hard, one business at a time, but, you know, maybe start with the corner of Newton Street and Main Street. So, we've just got to try. We can't throw our hands up and give up. And I will say this, every time I've been part of our select board office hours, Leah is always there. So she makes sure she comes, and she is, she is very good at what she does. So she, I think she's the right person for this, too. So I am in full support of making this change at special town meetings, so it can be effective immediately. Okay, go ahead, Julie.
Sorry, just one more thing. And, one, I really appreciate everybody's position here. I think it's really important. I've been saying for a long time that we really need leadership on economic issues, and it's great to see a board that's unanimously in support of it. That's not something I remember from my tenure, so that's great. I think that, you know, a bit of the elephant in the room here is that zoning changes require support of the planning board and collaboration of the two committees. Because Leah is phenomenal. Leah and the EDC don't have any authority to make those changes, right? So we really, it's going to take a collaborative effort. I think that Leah could be a connector. I think she can help do the work of bringing people together to talk about these kind of things. But frankly, you're right, we're in a crisis situation, but without the full support and dedication of the planning board to actually do zoning work, real zoning work, on Route 9 specifically, nothing's going to change. And we're going to be back here in five years in the same position. Because no amount of little one-on-ones and meetings or connections with local businesses are going to fix the problem. It's really zoning and infrastructure that's going to fix it, and we need planning's undivided, full support on that.
So, we agree with you, and we will do our part to try to encourage the participation, full-throated participation. And that's what we started when Andrew went to planning board. That was a reason to get them involved in the One Stop Grant, and they absolutely, unanimously agreed to do that. So it was a good meeting, so it was a start. Right? So, we hear you.
60-second success story?
Well, hold on a second. Karen hasn't had a chance to say anything. Karen, do you want to add anything before Claire goes again?
Um.
You okay? Okay, go ahead, Claire.
Okay, so, you brought up the thing about the tax base, all right? All of that vacant office space that is along Route 9 is not going to be filled with other offices. We all understand that. So, one of the ones, I don't know if everybody knows about that, is the, I can't think of his first name. His last name is Walker, that bought the-
Seth Walker.
Building, yeah. And finally was able to get approval for an adult daycare there. What a great use of the space. Leah could spend two, three hours a week tracking why we have lost businesses, what new businesses are going into other areas, into office buildings in other towns. And try to learn from that. And that's how you attract other business to come in, so that you can get it done. You know, Move Strong got it done in two weeks. I don't know what the situation was here, and we won't, you know, discuss that. But it has to be easy. And Mr. Walker would be a great person to interview, to say, how do you think, as a person who's just bought a building here in Southborough, and then wanted to put a different use in there, how do you think that went? One other thing, for the seniors who want to downsize and who want to stay in the town and want to afford it, okay, you need that type of housing for them. You also need the associated amenities that go along with it. There's your revenue. They've done it in Sudbury, they've done it in Wellesley, putting these places in where you have all of the, not the big grocery stores, but they have the little specialty shops. That's what we don't have here and would bring in revenue.
That requires mixed-use zoning.
So, you know, I don't want to get in trouble, I'm going to say, but this is a true story. Today, Patty Fiori had given me some really great tomatoes over the weekend, and I wanted to make a BLT, right? So I was at my office on Route 9, and I didn't have lettuce at home. I went all the way to Stop &amp; Shop to get it, because I don't know where to get a head of lettuce in this town. I'm sure there's probably a place, but I wasn't sure where it was. I thought, I'm just going to go Stop &amp; Shop to make sure.
Should have visited Patty's Garden.
Well, I wouldn't, but, you know, we used to have Capasos, right? We went to Capasos for that kind of stuff. English Gardens gone, Curtis is gone. So, anyway, I miss those, you know, family-owned businesses that, maybe they cost a little more than Lowe's and Home Depot, but they were worth going to. So, anyway. All right. Okay, we want to get advisory involved. Advisory needs to have their chance to talk to this group, and then we'll bring in the public. So Andrew, you want to, you want us to go back?
You're good. We'll just rotate. So, I'll speak first, and then I'll hand it over to be Larry, if you want to talk, and the rest of us in the room. So, I mean, this is something I was thinking about the other day. I'm supportive of the hours, but I think what a lot of people talked about is return on investment, and, you know, it takes money to make money. But I think we also need to be cognizant of the budget issues we have. So my recommendation is, we do move forward with this, we need to keep an eye on it. Maybe for a few years, and we reevaluate, try to make sure that we're not putting good money after bad, right? If we're still headed in the wrong direction, then maybe a coordinator position isn't the right type of solution. Maybe there's other solutions, right? But I don't want to just, I don't like to blanket add more hours or add positions without understanding an end goal, right? So I think, you know, working to understand what does a success of a full-time position look like. You know, we save some businesses, whatever the metric may be, probably not easy to have a metric, but just to have even anecdotal stories and show that we're heading in the right direction, and then revisit it in a few years. But that's my take. Larry, you have anything you want to say?
No, actually, I agree with that position completely. I'm in favor of the hours. I do believe that we need some metrics to go along with it, and we ought to be looking at those on a regular basis to ensure that we're actually getting what we want to get. But, you know, clearly, we have a problem that needs to be solved, and this seems like a good first step towards getting there.
Hi, EDC. Howard and I may have similar comments, but one of mine is, I think that for a full-time coordinator, and a lot of this work might happen behind the scenes, but we certainly don't see it, I think, a lot of the time. So you guys are going to have to be more visible for the town to really get behind you. As an example, planning board meetings, I'm a bit of a town meeting junkie, so I attend most of them. And I would say that I have not seen the EDC or the coordinator at those meetings advocating for businesses in real time. As an example, when the car condos were presenting to the planning board, they had a wonderful proposal. It was beautiful. I'd seen nothing as seamless as that come through. But one of the arguments was that, should the car condo complex close at 8:30? Imagine buying into a car condo complex where you had to not get your car, or you had to get in and out by 8:30 at night. That would have been a perfect EDC. I am going to be here advocating for these businesses, that this is a problem. You cannot have a business where you expect a right turn on Route 9 to end at 8:30. So I would just offer that to the EDC, as more visibility would probably be very good.
That's a great example, Marcy.
And that could be something in the excess of 19 and a half hours, in terms of time to do this.
That would help, right, if she had the time to go to the planning board meetings?
Hi. I think we all have similar thoughts that we're supportive of this. My comment is, I think the EDC has a PR problem. You need to get out, and what we've heard tonight is the most positive thing I've heard about it, except businesses are leaving, businesses are leaving. You have a strong problem of what you do, and when you go to a town meeting asking for funds, if everyone just has a negative opinion that it's done nothing, that's what you're going to get. You need to find a way, and besides doing all the work you're doing, is make it known to go to My Southborough or something, and make sure that people know what you're doing. That also gets you help. Because you're right, I've been talking about, you know, wastewater on Route 9 for, I've been here 10 years, I still probably nine of them. We need to do something about that. We can talk about where mixed use should be or not, but you need to solve that PR problem as well.
I think maybe Julie remembers this. I think there was a newsletter at one point years ago, wasn't there, for a brief time at least?
Yes. And again, you know, it's been, we did, and I know that, you know, Leah's been very active on social media, trying to revitalize that. But we used to do, I think, a monthly letter that we would publish on My Southborough. We used to do interviews with local businesses, you know, and we used to host meetings at different businesses. So we would maybe get a tour of the business, speak with the owners, and have our regular monthly meeting. Part of the problem is, there's been a lot of turnover in the last couple of years. I know Leah and the crew here are working really hard to kind of get things back online, but they're sort of in a hole, right? Because we were without a coordinator for a long time, at a time that I stepped down, a few other people stepped down, too, who sort of had that institutional knowledge. And it takes, it takes a while to get there. There are so many pieces, both, you know, just the EDC piece, but also just sort of how town stuff works, if you're not used to being on a committee. So, it takes a little while to get up to speed, and they sort of started with a deficit. And now, you know, we have several open positions and not a lot of institutional knowledge on the current committee. So, but ramping that up will help allow us to, you know, to start doing some of those more public-facing things again. And again, once we can have more resources of hopefully Leah's time, then they can, they can do more things like that. We used to host events for brokers. We used to host a quarterly brokers breakfast, to meet with local brokers and figure out, okay, what spaces are, what commercial spaces are available, and how do we make ties to begin to fill some of them. So those are, you know, we've got a playbook of things we can do if we have got the resources to do it.
You might think about adding to the list. We're talking with Southborough Access Media about enhancing some of their programming.
Yep.
So that could be a resource to, again, get the word out, interview with Leah, for example, there, or with businesses, et cetera, to, again, do some of the PR work, that I think could be very helpful.
We suggested every new business should have a slot on Southborough Access Media when they first come here. So how many slots need to be filled on EDC right now?
We recently reduced the numbers from seven to five.
Okay, and how many, how many do you have?
Two open right now.
All right, so we've all got to help this. I mean, this is on everybody, to try to get these slots filled, and maybe find some people, maybe drag some people back from the past, I don't know. So-
It's not a retirement.
You know who I'm looking at?
Well, I think, you know, to Howard's point, there's been a PR problem that, you know, we can, we could, you know, unpack that forever. I'm not going to do that right now. But, but, you know, I think there was, as I mentioned many times, I so appreciate the support of this board, because in the past, I don't feel like we've always had that. And being in committee that had no actual power to do anything, and also not feeling supported by the boards and committees that did have the power to do something, became very demoralizing. And I think when we tried a couple of years ago to bring this position full-time, making all these same arguments, it wasn't well-received. And, you know, so it's sort of, perception comes from the top. And so when we weren't being perceived well, when we were being, you know, things that weren't very nice were being said, our members were being treated poorly when they went to certain boards and committees, that, you know, that helps make a negative public perception, which then makes demoralizing, and makes people not want to join and participate. So, you know, there was a lot of frustration, I think, that was going on. And I'm hoping that with positive support from this committee, and hopefully others, that we can sort of get back to our heyday, where we were, and be more effective.
I agree.
I think things just take time, right, from my experience, and that I'm optimistic, based on what I've heard, that we'll be able to get this done this year. I mean, I think what you're talking about is, two years, two boards ago, Sam and I worked on this support for a new position, which would be both EDC coordinator and a grant coordinator. And we made some progress, but ultimately, I'm not remembering.
Didn't get supported.
Yeah, it didn't get support. The select board was split. I think the advisory committee was split, too. Personnel board didn't like the job description. People found it too complicated to have that type of a hybrid position. And actually, one, a lot of the feedback we got was, well, why don't you just increase the hours for the EDC coordinator position?
And here we are.
So here we are.
Andrew definitely was trying to recruit for EDC recently when he was campaigning. You know, I was up at transfer station when he was here, and believe me, he was working really hard on a local businessman to do it. So I don't think he's given up on him yet. So, we just got to do more. I mean, we can find people, we just got to do it. It's part of our job, so.
We have Kathy, we have Adam and Tim in the audience, if they want to say.
So Barry, you want to go next?
Yeah, I was just going to raise the issue about what happened two years ago. And being on the personnel board, we were one of the boards that had a negative reaction to what was being proposed. But the idea, I thought at the time, was there wasn't enough work necessarily for someone to do EDC position full-time. That's why you were introducing the grant-writing part, so the person would fill up the time. Now, what I'm hearing is, we need someone doing the EDC full-time. Yes, there's a grant-writing component of that. So has something changed, or is it just, we're trying to do this in a way that we can get it through, where people can support it?
So, I think that, and I remember being at that meeting, where we presented this to the personnel board. And I don't remember us ever conveying that there wasn't enough hours outside of grant writing. I think, I think there have always been enough hours outside of grant writing for somebody to be successful at this position. We look at all our pure towns, nobody else has a part-time coordinator, they're all full-time coordinators. I think the reason for the sort of hybrid position, which I understand caused a little bit of confusion, was that we were sort of at a grant-writing role at that point. We had just had a lot of success. It was at the point, post-COVID, when there was a lot of federal and state grant money available for different projects that we thought were good fits. But where we were struggling, and where I think that we've always struggled, is collaboration with other boards and committees that needed buy-in, particularly One Stop. So I'm happy to hear that there's been more collaboration on that. I know you guys have been getting involved in that more for a while now. But, so I think, the thought was, if the, at the time, if that position spent half their time just focused on EDC, and half their time focused on grant writing, that wasn't necessarily EDC-specific, because there was so much overlap with other boards and committees. You know, we don't, we don't work in a silo. Economic development is not a silo. So I think it was sort of a creative approach, that obviously was not successful, but that was the thinking at the time. I don't think the climate has changed that much. I think, you know, it just is a simpler approach, maybe, to have one full-time position that is EDC, and have that person just work really hard to try to collaborate with other boards and committees. I know at the time, the prior coordinator was very frustrated because she wasn't, she was trying to do things like the One Stop Grant, that certainly required buy-in from other, from other boards and committees and personnel in town. She wasn't getting responses from anybody. So she wasn't able to put forth a lot of the projects, and she was very hardworking, very smart, very creative, but she wasn't able to bring those to fruition because she wasn't getting responses from other, other boards and committees. And as the EDC, we're sort of, you know, we're not elected, we don't have power to do anything other than advise, you know, advise the select board, so.
Barry, the other thing, too, the select board was split. And so we were, those that were for this, were trying to figure a way to bring the others who weren't for it along, and with that, we dangled the grant out there, where they can do grants. So, one, because we didn't think, I didn't think EDC didn't need the hours to do it. I think they could use three people. So it wasn't that, it was just we were trying to find a way to get full support from the select board. So, and it didn't work.
The other thing, too, is, subsequent to that time, there really has been a lot of changes. The state has put together, they've refined the plan of how to give out grant money, and they've made it so much easier. There's a whole process that they've put together. It's painted by the numbers. And that, in order, it's not just the Route 9 corridor and zoning, it's not just wastewater, it's, you know, money for cleanup, for like Break Neck Hill, I don't know if they used a grant for that or not. But they're all things that are related to how you can bring better economics into Southborough.
Thank you.
Adam? Adam?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I don't want to repeat a lot of what people have already said, because I think it's been a good discussion, and I don't necessarily have anything new to add to it, other than I did want to just state, I'm in full support of this. The town certainly needs it. Back when we had the discussion last year, I was in support of it without the grant writing portion added to the role. I think there's more than enough that this person can do, and we need someone desperately in this role. So I, I wholeheartedly support it.
Thank you, Adam. I don't see Tim. Is Tim still here?
Tim's in the audience, but not on the panel.
Vanessa, can you bring over, assuming Tim Martel wants to come over? There he is. Hey, Tim.
Hello, how's everybody doing tonight?
We're doing well.
Much like Adam, I don't, I don't have a lot to add to the conversation. I'm generally supportive.
Short and sweet, thank you. Andrew, anything else Advisory wants to add? Anything anybody else wants to add? Yeah. I'm sorry, okay, we've got one person in the virtual.
Not sure who it is. Says Al.
Well, we know which Al it's not.
Hello, Alan Domniak, 5 Boswell Lane.
Ohio.
I didn't, I joined from my phone in a hurry and forgot what, I last signed in with Zoom app, so my apologies. I, I too am not going to belabor much of the conversation. I just want to underscore a couple of points, and I'll be very brief. As a former EDC member and former Vice Chair, I was very supportive of this role, and helped, all of us helped to kind of go support, to get this to be a full-time role, or two half-time roles, or hybrid role, whatever you want to call it, because I, I and others feel like it's, it's necessary. And I still believe that, and I'm very supportive of Leah in this role. I, my conversations with Mareka, when she had this role, was, this was easily, easily more than 19 and a half hours. She put in more than 19 and a half hours, and only obviously could get paid for that, and could easily have filled up more than, the more than 19 and a half hours. So I have no doubt, there's not, there's, there's plenty of work to go around, and whoever steps in this role would easily fill to 40. The last point I want to make too is, the phrase ROI was mentioned, and I just think it's really interesting that if you look at the number, amount of dollars that were brought in for grants, easily eclipses the small increase in the salary that requires this role. So in a tongue-in-cheek kind of way, this role will pay for itself several times over. So I just wanted to add that. I'm supportive of this, and it's been a good discussion. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry I didn't recognize you.
Quite, it's quite all right. Thank you.
All right, so, Select Board, do we want to reiterate or vote for support of this article? We don't have the numbers in it yet, right?
In the draft, right now, we do.
Okay, all right, so, so the article's ready to go, right?
Yeah. It's Article 16 in the current draft.
All right, so do we want to go ahead and vote on Article 16, while it is fresh on our minds?
With the caveat that the numbers are going to change a lot.
Yeah.
The ordering of the articles.
Right. So we're voting on this article regardless of where it ends up on the warrant? Anybody, everybody agree?
I'm ready.
So Andrew, you want to make the motion?
I, I want, yeah, I'll move that the Select Board, Support Article 16 is written in the warrant.
But it may change the number.
So describe the article, Al, say what it is.
The article to increase the funding for the Economic Development Coordinator. Currently, Article 16 is the copy we're looking at.
Second.
All in favor?
I got one question before we, sorry, we have to have a discussion first.
Discussion, sorry.
So the one question I have is, the 27929, does that include benefits?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Says it, right?
Oh, I'm ready.
All right, so now we'll vote again. All in favor? 5-0, thank you very much. Andrew, you, when are you guys going to do your votes?
I don't know. Okay, we'll get, take a vote now.
Okay, so go ahead.
Advisory, well Advisory Committee vote to support Article 16, I guess with the dollar amount to be amended in the warrant, or is the dollar amount correct?
It's...
With the dollar amount?
We think it's correct, yeah. The article number may change, but...
All right. Seconded by Howard. I guess we'll do a roll call vote. Any discussion? But I'll start with you, Larry.
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Marcy? Howard? Andrew is aye. That is a 7-0 vote. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much. Julie?
Everybody.
It's a new, it's a new day. My gosh, you got a unanimous vote from both of these, so, okay, go home and be happy.
No, I do better when I'm not on it, apparently.
So Michael, welcome to, to your role, and Karen, always good to see you. I see her.
Appreciate it.
We do a lot of things together. Claire, thank you.
Thank you all for the opportunity. I've noted everything that's been discussed, and I will absolutely take it to heart, so thank you.
Leah, thank you for zooming in tonight. We'll talk. So we're going to take a five-minute recess, then pick up the warrant.
Recording stopped.
All right, we got to go.
Recording in progress.
So come on up, Advisory. All right, so now we're just going to go through the warrant as it looks tonight. Everybody's got a, should have a clean copy of what was printed this afternoon, so this is current. So we've got 19 potential articles. There's a 20th, there's another citizen petition that's coming from Joe Palmer, so 20 potential ones. So I'm going to run through these pretty fast, especially ones that I think are pretty perfunctory and administrative, and shouldn't give anybody much pause. I'll explain what I think needs to be explained, then keep going. And anybody's got a question, just raise your hand, okay? So these are the perfunctory ones. Okay, and these are the ones too that are probably candidates for the consent agenda. So I'm going to talk about 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and, where's my other one? And 19, okay? So 1, Amendment Personal, Personal Salary Administration Plan. Well Barry, we probably should have you do this one. So this one's simple, there's not much to it. This is what's happening. We're adding a Position of DPW Laborer. We are adding the Health Director. The previous Health Director was a contract, contractor, so now this is an employee Health Director. We're adding Health Agent. We are changing Schedule C to say Seasonal Personnel. We are adding the Position of Intern under Schedule C, and we are putting asterisks next to each one of those positions that denotes that it is fee-based, meaning that it's paid out of the fees collected for the programs that they are working in. And we're also saying that the intern position is effective October 1st, 2024, so people can start taking advantage of that immediately. And that's it. Barry, you want to make any comments, given?
Kathy, could I make a comment here?
Yeah.
Is that a typo in the title? Shouldn't it be Personnel?
Yeah, it should. I just saw that.
Versus Personnel.
Yes, definitely.
That may be the first of many mistakes you find. It's good to catch them now.
Marguerite, you missed that one? Such a job. So Barry, you want to make any comment on, on this one?
No. I think they all make sense, obviously. We would never approve them if they didn't.
Yeah.
I think there's good reason for all the changes.
Okay. Anybody else? Howard?
Wait, on the number of interns? Is it one, or is every department?
There's no number, right? Vanessa, it's just a position that's being added, so it's not like we're adding...
It's, yeah, it's a classification, I think. One of the issues, and specifically, I think, Youth and Family Services, you know, they, they, you know, they want to have part-time, you know, intern positions, and a lot of the staff in Youth and Family Services have come up through, you know, paid interns and that. And we've never really had anything formal, and, you know, I, I think it's, it's good to have that designation, so other departments, you know, can take advantage of that, especially, you know, if we're trying to find people, and we want to, you know, bring people in and start to groom them into the position. You know, it's, it's good to have that. In the same way as going through Personnel Board, or can we just hire? No, it's the same, as same as going through Personnel Board.
Okay, sorry. Mark, I had one comment there. Youth and Family has actually traditionally used unpaid interns, and there have been a reasonable supply of them. Recently, that market has gotten hugely more competitive, so they've had to think about paying a small stipend to the interns, and this gives them the flexibility, I think, through the normal personnel process to do that.
Yeah, so you had, you had talked about this previously, Sam, as to whether we can do some type of, I think you may have, you know, honorarium or something along those lines, to try to get around, you know? Is there a way for us to do this that may not specifically, you know, so I, I think this is just the more direct approach to correct this, give us the ability to do it.
It's relatively low cost, very effective.
I was going to say, it's cheap labor.
That feeds, feeds employment in that department historically, which is great.
All right, enough of that one?
30 of them is no longer cheap, that's why, you know.
No.
Okay, well this doesn't talk about number. It still has to go through budget.
Yeah, it'd still have to go through the budget process.
Still going to be a funding source.
This just gives you the ability to do it, if you want to do it.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else on this one?
I think...
Can everybody watch what's going on behind me as far as whether Adam or Tim have their hands upon anything, or say anything? Okay, next one, Pilot Committee.
Just making sure that we update the summary to reflect the actual changes, or if they can be redlined or something.
They are going to hand out a redlined version, is what Vanessa has told us tonight.
Okay.
You will notice though, in a lot of these, you know, we don't, you know, we're lacking, we're summary deficient.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so we need to, we need to put some of those together, and, and those are still some of the things that need to be filled out. I've asked for assistance. Anybody who wants to offer, you know, offer summaries up for consideration, I, you know, appreciate that.
Give you my Advisory Staff.
Yeah.
All right, moving on. This one is really easy.
Sitting next to you.
Okay, so you remember the town meeting that was at Algonquin? There was a citizen's petition to add a Pilot Committee that was promoted by, or proposed by Patty Fiore. Got approved, got passed. We have a Pilot Committee. She, the Chair, Patty is the Chair, wants to reduce this committee from seven to five. For obvious reasons, we don't have seven on the committee. So, okay, any questions on that one? All right. The next one, this is...
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Should, should we simply take the vote?
I was going to have us vote on the first six all in one vote.
Okay.
Okay, but I'm, I'm just trying to speed it along here.
I want to have a discussion about five, but it'll be brief.
Okay, that's Jim Haggerty's. Okay, all right. All right, so just in case, and let's just go ahead. So Andrew, I know you guys are going to vote later. We're just going to vote real quick, so we don't waste your time, right? So we, you know, okay, so someone, so Al, you make all the motions. Sam, you second them?
Okay.
Okay, so Al, go for the first.
So I, I move that the Board support Articles 2, 3, and 4 as written in the draft of 827.
Second.
Well, wait a minute, what about 1? Oh, we did 1.
You didn't vote on it, then?
Oh.
We didn't vote, so we got to do 1, too.
Okay, 1, 2, 3, and 4 as printed in the draft of 827.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, so Advisory, that number 3 and 4, they don't exist anymore. So we're just trying to get, officially let them die. There, there's, these committees haven't been around in, like, decades. So we're just trying to clean up the listed...
You made your statement tonight.
It would be advantageous for the three committees to meet together before the ninth.
Before the ninth?
Before the ninth.
Boy, okay, it's gonna have to, because you know, Labor Day is Monday, we're meeting on the fifth. elections.
No, just otherwise.
The ninth is-
We're gonna ask for changes, then we're gonna have to amend on the town meeting floor, as opposed to getting them into the warrant.
Okay, so let's, so you're saying let's try to get together before the ninth and see if we can't-
Yeah, that or we join the planning board meeting and do it on the ninth.
That might make more sense, actually, yeah.
So you want to propose that? Because that meeting's scheduled, they've got a meeting scheduled.
It makes sense to just post a meeting for the, we have time to just, for each of the boards to post a meeting, and it's just, that's if a quorum of us show up. I mean, I just put it in my calendar, I'm gonna try to make an effort to be there.
All right, so-
It's also be useful, I expect what we'll get is a preview of the presentation they're gonna make to town meeting that just presents this very complicated article in five minutes.
All right, okay.
How are we gonna handle the map on this thing? I actually read this, I didn't see reference to the map.
Don't look at me.
Is it in there, Mark? To me, a map is a key part of the process.
Yeah.
There you go, look at Mark.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure how that's gonna be handled, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we handled it in a certain way for the downtown district.
And then on their, their public forums, you know, they, they had it on the screen pretty well.
Yeah. My recollection from that is the map doesn't need to be in the warrant, it just needs to be in some other posted place, which is a central reference.
Yeah, but, but when, when the warrant is distributed electronically at least, there ought to be a reference to say, if you wanna see the map, click on this link, because-
Aren't they providing a handout, I thought?
Yes.
So I, I would imagine that map would be in the handout upfront.
Okay, but some, some clear connection there, so people can see what's going on, without the map, really hard to-
In the, in the summary, we can put the link to the map or something.
Okay, the next one, of course, is the REC, so it's a little weird, we're voting on an article where we're asking town meeting to support, but I guess we should vote on it, right? As individuals, yes, town meeting, we want you to support that article.
And so, um, I think that Sam's wording is, is, is-
And I gave the wording to advisory, they've got what the wording's gonna be, if we accept what Sam wrote.
Look, I think it makes sense just to read this for people watching, so Sam, since you're the author, you-
Go ahead.
What?
Give Sam the honors.
Okay.
I'm not gonna steal your excellent-
No pride, pride of authorship.
Yeah.
Article, this is eight, I guess, on this version here. "To see if town meeting will vote to recommend that the select board should exercise its authority to enter into an intermunicipal agreement, IMA, with the Metro West Regional Emergency Communications Center, the REC, for the provision of public safety communication services, including 911 response and emergency public safety dispatch services, in place of the services currently being provided locally by town employees in the Public Safety Building Dispatch Center. This recommendation includes the expectations that the IMA will provide reasonable local influence and control over the REC services, and that the select board's plan for this process addresses local concerns regarding financial exposure to REC financial assessments and staffing presence at the Public Safety Building, or do or act anything in relation thereto."
Okay, I'll move that we adopt the language just read.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, that's all we're voting on right now, is the language, right? Then we'll vote on the article. Okay, so, all in favor? Okay, so we've adopted this language to go into the article. Now, Al, make the motion to-
So now I move that the amended article be placed in Article eight, in the eight twenty-seven draft of the warrant.
Second. I did, I did read the review.
All right, we're getting distracted here. Okay, so we've got a motion, and we've got a second. Okay, all in favor? Okay. All right, the next one is the-
Do you wanna vote to support it?
Oh, we'd love for you guys to support that one.
No, I mean-
We, we just did.
You guys, you voted to put it in the warrant.
No, I thought our second vote-
We did two votes, so we voted first of all to put the language in, and then we vote to support the, the article. That was the second vote.
Okay, we'll check the tape.
That's our story, and we're sticking with it, Andrew, we did.
This is the point in the meeting where we're starting to get a little-
Do we need instant replay from the booth?
Okay. That's what we did, and we're sticking with it. Okay, next one is one that we've been working on, where we're trying to reorganize the entities that work on affordable housing. So right now, we've got the Affordable House Trust, we've got the CPC that has the community housing bucket, and we've got CHOPSY. So, Andrew-
Wait, wait, this one is Article, we're talking about Article ten, correct?
Yeah.
I beg your pardon, I beg your pardon, yep, I'm sorry.
Am I wrong?
Yeah, my, my bad.
All right, I'm on nine. Okay, so, Andrew and Al and, help me.
Doug, Matts-
Doug, Matts-
Paul Desmond-
Paul Desmond and Lisa Brascio have a, there's a working group forum that's working on this. Andrew, take it from there.
Sure.
What are we gonna do here?
We have met only twice, I think we're very close. Basically, the, I'll, I'll jump in here too, but the, the main issue that we've identified is that in 2005-
So the, the, you want me to, so I drafted, I think we're going to have to split this into two articles. It's messy. The first thing to know is that there was a vote in 2005 establishing the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee, or may, may have been the board, I don't remember the-
The Board of Trust-
The Trust Fund.
And it defined the membership of the board. Then, there is also a document, the trust document, which says that the trustees can change the membership terms. It seems to me we need to clean that up. And the first, and so I, my, my recommendation is, is that we have an article that establishes a new Board of Trustees, of five members, and that, once adopted, that the trustees would then change the trust document to recognize that town meeting has the sole authority to define the term, qualifications, and number of the trustees.
Town meeting does?
So you wanna throw out to town meeting, because I can tell you what I think happened here. If you read, if you look at the trust document itself, it's almost verbatim what the law says, you know, whatever, forty-four, fifty- It's almost verbatim, and that law says the following, that if you've got a multi-member CEO, like a select board, which we do, we got five members, you only have to point one.
Right.
And I don't think they read it right, so they pointed the whole thing, so we ended up with all five, all, every single member on there.
It's a mess. So, the, in, in the draft that I, that I've done, it says that there would be five members. There would be one member appointed by the select, one member of the select board. The four, other four members would be at large with a preference for at least two of the members to have expertise in construction, property development, affordable housing, social services, or, or finance.
So, who appoints those four, select board?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, the select board appoints, and town meeting defines the term, the number, and the qualifications. I have, I've draft language, it's just that, I, I've distributed it to the committee, we haven't met. I was gonna wait until we, we met to-
So here, at this point, we can try to get this working group to meet next week.
Yeah.
If we're to meet.
Maybe get Jay Tallerman to opine on it as well.
So this, so this first part-
Well, so, there's more.
Then you got to also dissolve CHOPSY at the same time in a separate article.
So, but yes, we, we have to have a separate article that dissolves CHOPSY. Now, the issue of who gets the CHOPSY seat on the CPAC is actually handled in the CPAC bylaw. It says that if one of these appointing committees ceases to exist, the select board shall define the, the air effectively. So, we don't need to worry about that.
Good.
So, as it said, it's, it was messier than-
So two articles, and one to restructure the committee, the other to dissolve CHOPSY.
Yeah.
Basically, dissolving CHOPSY is to remove that section of town code that deals with CHOPSY.
What about if we just vote now, to just put those articles in the warrant?
Yep.
Okay, and then we'll-
Can we talk about the language at a later meeting, maybe the next one? Because I want all four people to have the background, not just two.
We haven't seen anything written.
We ought to have a specific one.
You guys let us know what it's gonna say when it's, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, so, so-
So we're gonna, right now, we're leaving them in, right? We're leaving it in?
What I, what I will move is that we-
Yeah.
I'll move that we reserve a place for nine A and nine B.
Okay.
As, in the, as defined in the draft of eight twenty-seven, nine A to be changing of the term of, to replace the 2005 article, and nine B to eliminate CHOPSY.
And then there's gonna be a third one.
No.
No.
That's all that's needed.
That's it?
Yeah. I hope.
And then the Affordable House Trust trustees can change the Affordable House Trust document. It says we can amend, so we can take care of that separately.
Yes, yeah, and then-
That's not town meeting.
And then the trustees would amend the document to recognize town meeting's sole authority to-
So it's consistent, the two, okay, all right.
That's all laid out in the thing I've sent to the committee.
Okay, sounds like a plan. Everybody okay with the plan?
Yep, yep.
All right, next one, Al, we're not going to go forward with this at this special town meeting, correct?
We had a motion.
Well, I think we, there's a window of time, if we can get a quorum of this working group to meet and vote on next week, right? Because that's the sole window to try to get it before the-
You're talking about transferring the money now.
Oh, oh, sorry.
I've moved on. I've moved on.
You've moved on, okay.
We didn't vote.
By the way, um-
Well-
We didn't-
That takes care of my-
I, I don't wanna vote on it, because we, I'm not, we gotta get the language right.
Good, I understand, he moved and I seconded, so I thought we had a motion.
Okay, so we are, um-
He's reserving a place in the warrant for this.
Right, so we agree with that, and we don't, so we agree with that. Okay, so now, I'm moving on to the actual transfer of the money from the CPC, Community Housing Bucket. So that's not gonna happen, right? On this-
That's my understanding. I have an application that we're gonna talk about in a little bit, to move the money.
Right.
But my understanding is that the CPAC has a deadline of eight thirty-one for the annual town meeting.
Yep.
Okay, so advisory, we're trying to get CPC to agree to move the community housing bucket money over to the Affordable House Trust, so it's all in one place, so that, because Affordable House Trust can buy a property overnight when we want to. We've got the authority outside town meeting to buy, sell, loan, do all kinds of stuff. So when a project comes up, or property comes up, we can move fast. We can't, we don't have to wait a year and a half for CPC to do their thing, and then bring it to town meeting and get voted on, when, I mean, what property's gonna stay on the market for, you know, twelve, eighteen months? So that's why there's Affordable House Trust to begin with, is to allow us to move expeditiously outside town meetings. We're just trying to get all the money over into one bucket. We've got about four hundred thousand dollars already in the Affordable House Trust. There's another five hundred sitting in CPC in their buckets, we're just trying to get it all moved over, and it hasn't been easy.
What does that do to CPC's control of that money?
Well, they don't have the control they do now, that's for sure, which is what their argument is. We're required, the money has to be spent a certain way, we have, you know, we've got restrictions, we've got sixteen things we can do. So there's restrictions on what we can do, it certainly is in the affordable housing arena, and then we've got to account every year to CPC for what we're using the money for. So that's exactly what the concern is, is that they are losing some control over the use of the money. They'd rather see a project come forth to them and approve it, go through their process, which is cumbersome. And it's just not necessarily appropriate for when you're trying to, you know, a house comes up, we've gotta move pretty quick.
We've lost three quarterville.
Yeah, five quarterville, yep.
So they, like, on the, if you go to the website of the Community Preservation Coalition, they have a template document. It's basically like a con, because this issue recurs over and over in other towns. It's like a con, template contract between your local CPC and your Affordable Housing Trust Fund that basically says, if the Affordable Housing Trust Fund uses CPC funds for a project like this, it will do one, two, three, four, and all reporting requirements.
And county town council tells us that very few towns have the process we have. Typically, town meeting appropriates the money for the housing trust, it immediately goes into the housing trust, the housing trust is able to spend the money then, so-
Yeah, but we don't know if this will be on the warrant, so-
We don't.
It's probably-
He wants us to move on, okay.
Okay.
All right, moving on, moving on. No, we're leaving it on for the moment.
Well, well-
Well, let me back up, we don't think this is gonna, it's not ready.
Yeah.
Legal rights to do it.
So it's coming off, it's coming off.
Yeah, I think we take it out.
Okay. Sorry, sorry, Andrew, yes, it's coming off.
So this becomes nine.
Okay, so ten's coming off, okay, eleven is also fairly administrative, so this one is being done, because it gives us a way to get more money into CPA-funded projects. If this had been adopted before, we could have done the golf course irrigation system differently, which is what was doing, so, we couldn't, because we didn't have this. So we're just trying to get this in, it allows money from other town sources to be used for CPA partially funded projects. We can add other money to their money to actually get something done.
When, when we accepted CPA in 2002 or '03, this language wasn't in there. The state subsequently amended CPA, and towns that have accepted CPA since that time have this embedded in it. We didn't, so we're trying to catch up from what was originally expected there, so. Again, we don't have to do anything, it gives us an option to do it differently.
All right, so can we vote on that one?
So I'll move Article eleven, as printed in the eight twenty-seven draft warrant.
Move that we support it, I'll second.
Yep, to support, he moves to support. Okay, all in favor? All right, go on. Okay, the next, so the next one, I've got two, I wanna move, I wanna suggest moving up the EDC coordinate position, which we've already voted on, right? To go right after this next one. So twelve is really simple, it's amending the fiscal year 2025 budget for a few minor things that total about seventeen thousand dollars. It's not coming out of the tax levy, it's coming out of Paul Sabelly's overlay. Okay, so there's no tax effect to doing this, and it's like a thousand here, a thousand there. It's seven or eight departments that are involved here, so it's pretty minor stuff.
But what it really is, these are taxes that have already been collected.
Yeah, 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 so it's not going to increase future taxes, it's gonna, we're gonna use previously collected taxes. Okay.
So, do you wanna move Article twelve?
Yeah.
Okay, I move Article twelve, as printed in the draft eight twenty-seven warrant.
Move that we support it, right?
I move that we support, yeah.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, that one's done.
Hey Kathy, are you thinking about moving Article nineteen?
Yes. No, I didn't say nineteen.
I know, I'm, I'm saying nineteen.
So you want, well, I thought nineteen should be moved at number seven, because I think that is consent agenda two, so yes. Move nineteen to seven, right? After six, and then move EDC up after the one we just voted on, number twelve, as we're looking at right now, because it's- It is budget-related, and I don't wanna lose the audience before we vote on this.
Kathy, on, on twelve, I mean, I'm fine, it doesn't bother me, but it just looks real messy.
So, what do you wanna do?
I'm just saying, in the future, let's not have special, a tall town meeting article for seventeen thousand dollars, and people should try to live with them, you know, what their budget has, I mean, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I agree, I agree, it is a little-
If you, in, in treasurer collective's budget, if they can't find seven hundred and fifty dollars to pay for increased expense we got-
So this, you and I mentioned it too, both. I mean, this is not just Paul Sabelly, Paul Sabelly's got one little piece of it, but it's not, I mean, it's across the board. So, my guess is Sabelly wanted to do it, maybe, and then talked to Brian, and Brian said, we might as well clean up other ones too, that we know about at the same time, so I agree. Not a good idea. Not a good practice, okay. Moving on, so, is Melissa available, Vanessa? Chief Puntini, I'm sorry you're sitting here, I know where you're sitting here. As soon as we get downstairs, we'll jump to while you're here, okay, and, and try to get you out of here.
Melissa has her hand up, oh, here she comes, okay, good.
Larry and Tim, if you're following along, we're on Article thirteen.
Hey, Melissa.
Melissa's there, she's muted, there she is.
There she is, hey, Melissa.
Hello, hi.
Thank you for jumping in tonight. So, to try to move this along, I think if you could just kinda start from scratch, big picture to both groups here. You've got the full advisory committee here, and the full select board here, as to what happened, and then why we need to do this piece of it.
Sure, absolutely. So as I'm sure most of you are aware, we have previously two point two million that was approved at a previous town meeting. This was based on worst-case scenario of solid waste that was found during our test pitting, and isolated asbestos-containing material areas. Basically, since then, we completed about a third of the dump, we were able to separate out the solid waste from soil and dispose of it properly. What we've run into that was not prevalent on our test pits was the heavily mixed small pieces, friable pieces of asbestos-containing material. So as we got into the depth of the dump, the issue being is that we cannot certify, the contractor has agreed, the engineer has agreed, that we cannot certify that the waste that they then are screening out is free from asbestos-containing materials. Part of this is because when we did our sampling during our initial test pitting to have that initial two point two million, we, you know, we had kind of, and during construction, we've had a mixed bag of what looks like asbestos-containing materials were coming back both positive and negative, but the majority of it being within the mixed kind of sediment and soil are coming back positive. Therefore, under asbestos-containing materials regulations, et cetera, we need to basically call the rest of the area of the dump a regulated area under those regulations, and the cost of disposal for ACMs, or those asbestos-containing materials, is vastly higher than just what we would be disposing of for solid waste. We've looked at every alternative we could think of, including capping, the price would be the same. And ironically, if we were even to put a cap on it, we would be excavating almost the same amount of material, a foot of material would be left. So at that point, if we can, you know, completely remove for the same cost, it wouldn't put a use restriction on the property, and would not further have like ongoing requirements, like monitoring and things like that. DEP also still calls for a straight dig and haul, they've looked at the situation as things have arisen, and our proposed alternatives, and the one that we've put forward is kind of the agreed-upon best-case scenario. Our contractor, you know, unfortunately, the price for disposal is about three hundred and twenty-three dollars a ton, and we are planning for at most ten thousand tons. So that is the main driving force of this change of cost, because these small pieces of asbestos are just breaking apart, and just the stricter regulations around them, there's just no way to separate them and be able to put soil back and/or dispose of it as just solid waste. So that's kind of a little-winded, but higher level, I think, to get the most information out of me.
So Melissa, ten thousand tons at three hundred and twenty-three dollars, that's three point two million, right?
Correct, so we have not spent all of our previously approved, so the two point one that's proposed in the warrant is supplemental to the two point two. So I still, I've sat down with, you know, Mark, Brian, and Carla, and gone over, you know, what we've spent thus far, and included additional costs. So we still have, you know, I think, one point five, more than one point five million left in the original approval, because we had to stop so early. So a lot of that is, you know, carrying over into this next iteration of funding.
So the total cost, Melissa, right now, is estimated at four point three million?
I'd have to double-check the specific numbers, I don't have my spreadsheet in front of me, but I have it all charted out, I'd be happy to send it over to you, but yes, about that.
Well, I'm just adding the two articles together, the first one, second one.
Melissa, what was the, what was the material that contained the asbestos that was dumped there?
A lot of asphalt roof shingling, as we've dug, we found a lot of roofs, I think from the various sheds that were on the property that Farmer Davis used for his various escapades, you know, cement board. It's a lot of random trash.
Any chance there's gonna be more after this?
No, so the cost of this disposal is for strictly digging and hauling everything that's left. So we're not gonna separate anymore, we don't have an ability to separate the soil. So our contractor originally stated five thousand tons were left. Our engineer has very highly suggested we plan for ten thousand, based on the kind of variable but average depth throughout the rest of the project.
Thank you.
So a question I have is, so this is an appropriation. Is there some reason why we're not borrowing to do this?
We are borrowing.
We are.
Oh, okay, it says appropriate.
It also says-
What?
Yeah, we're borrowing.
I thought I'd check if the language says-
Usually says borrow or appropriate.
Yeah, this is the, this is the language that came from bond counsel, which includes all of the options raised by taxation, transfer from available funds, borrowing, otherwise provided.
Okay, all right.
But the intention-
I beg your pardon, yep, okay, thank you. So, is it, yeah, no, um, can we use CPA funds for this? I mean, this is an open-
No, this is not eligible, nope.
Okay.
Melissa, you got a couple here nodding yes, and you're saying no, so are you sure?
I'm, as I've been told, it is not applicable, it's not a preservation, it's, you know, it's not really a restoration per se. You know, I looked at various other grants through the MVP process, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, but I've been told since the GETCO, it was not available for CPA.
Melissa, this is Sam, a random thought, have you talked with Bill Khandiff about this at all? I mean, he's got a lot of experience in sort of engineering kind of projects, I don't know if he's done any of this kind of work, but, I mean, he may have some ideas about the disposal potentially, I don't know.
So, the disposal is actually pretty straightforward, there's only so many facilities that will accept this waste. So our LSP and our environmental engineer have kind of vetted to make sure that it's the appropriate number, and looked at different facilities as well, that our contractor doesn't use to make sure it's still within market rate. So it's kind of based on the allowance of the facility, and what they have. We are trying to work with another facility that would get the cost per tonnage down to two seventy-seven per ton, but that's not guaranteed, so we've planned for that three twenty-three.
Okay, just again, I'm always interested in extra opinions on things, but may not be appropriate here.
And DEP, in our meetings with DEP in the last month, have kind of, you know, they, they also grimaced at the price, but seems to be in line with what they've identified in other projects.
Melissa, what are the fines consequences of not doing this?
DEP has been very clear that lack of funding does not cause extenuating circumstances, it will not extend our deadline. I don't have the ACO in front of me, so I can't tell you the specific fines for day, but they are happy to work with us in the timeline, as long as we are making progress forward and keeping them apprised, but, you know, lack of approval does not give us leeway, they've made that pretty clear from the beginning. So they could fine us, and then subsequently do the cleanup, and either withhold funds that are then dispersed to the state, or in some other action to recuperate those costs.
Often, they'll, they'll clean up and charge us for it, basically.
Well, that's what she's saying, that's what they do, and then they withhold money they owe to us from other things, so that's how they get their money back. Okay, so, are we sure that we have done everything we can to find any available funds to offset this, grants, et cetera?
From my end, I've tried to come up with as many as I could, you know, it doesn't fit a lot of the kind of standard bills for grants that are out there, and I've always been under the impression that CPA wasn't available. And then we did do, you know, once we kind of were addressed with this issue, I had the contractor go out and do a tighter test pit region, to make sure that there weren't areas on the outskirts of the dump area that we could continue to separate out. Obviously, if we occur some areas that are very clearly do not contain asbestos, we will continue to do that, but it looked like as we get into the depths and really started digging larger quantities, all that asbestos was just breaking up to small, smaller-than-one-inch pieces.
I, I am gonna suggest that you have a conversation with Mr. Khandiff, because in the context of the Atwood problem that we know is also coming up, he did seem to mention that he had familiarity with other sources of funding, and so I would encourage you to just knock on his door and have a conversation, because- just knock on his door and have a conversation because, you know, two heads are always better than one, and you've got two good heads here.
Absolutely.
I agree. All right, Andrew?
Yeah, no, I think I echo what, if we can push this off, try to even hear Mark's talk to our state federal reps, get them to bottom on cleanup constitution.
Have we done that yet? Have we talked to anybody as far as trying to get help?
So I'm having a hard time hearing Andrew, so I'm not sure if that was directed at me. Sorry.
Basically, mostly towards the select board of talking to our state federal reps to see if they're earmarked or other things, grants, et cetera.
I've at least been marking, working with the DEP Solid Waste Division. You know, they don't necessarily offer any reprieves for this. You know, our current deadline that we are supposed to be completed was already the middle of September. They're more than happy to extend that, you know, understanding that we are getting funding and we are working towards the goal. But otherwise, you know, they haven't offered any solutions that I've been aware of. And talking with the various, not necessarily planning groups, but kind of the climate resiliency side of things that this more fits under, there hasn't been something that kind of fits this bill because it's not necessarily watershed protection. It's not really drinking water. You know, it's not quite pollution. It's solid waste, which is, even though it's bad and we want it out, they don't quite consider to be hazardous. But, you know, now that this is more of an asbestos, I can definitely kind of reach back out to those groups and see if anything else is out there. But at this time, I think we do need the funding to be able to continue this. You know, we've, we've tried to par down as much as we can and look at alternatives and solutions, and this seems to be the only reasonable path forward.
It's not a brownfields property. It's not a redevelopment property. You know, it was not contaminated by a company that, you know, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of money available for those and everything in that. This is not one of those. This is a farm dump in the middle of the woods, you know, for a property that we purchased that we, you know, notified DEP about over a number of years, you know, through, you know, through one of our residents. And they finally reached back out and said, "We're hearing a lot about this issue. What's going on?" And that is what led us down the primrose path of the administrative consent order and to where we, where we are today.
What's the timeline on the consent order? I mean, is this something we could...
We're supposed to have it done by September, but we, apparently, she said that they are going to work with us as long as they know that we are funding this so that they will give us more time, but September was our deadline to have it done.
Well, so, I mean, if we fund this, it's not going to be done.
No.
Is it going to be done this year?
Yes, it'll most likely be done, you know, weather permitting, obviously, but it would be done within two months.
So the opportunity to go out and look for other funding is modest at best.
High limited, yes.
But let's at least try. So Melissa, if you'll talk to Bill Kundif.
Yep.
One of us will talk to our representative to see if they know of anything.
And Mark, you might run this by our grants consultant that we haven't heard from in a long time. Maybe she has an idea. Unlikely, but wouldn't hurt to call her.
Yep, yep. There's no downside to that either. And I assume that our insurance carriers don't cover this, right? We've checked to make sure we have no insurance on this, something like this.
There's nothing you can do to go after prior owners?
So that, yeah, that, I think that was visited in 2008 and has since passed when Farmer died.
We have looked at that, and there really doesn't seem to be an opportunity there. We should have done a carve-out when we took the property. That's the old should've, would've.
Should've, would've, could've, right.
Exactly. So one of the things that I've come to realize sitting in this seat is, is that we are simply the custodian of prior generations' misdeeds, and some future board will be the custodian of our misdeeds.
This is $4 million. I mean, this is terrible. Okay, do we want to vote on this tonight? Do we want to wait?
I don't think we have a choice.
I agree.
Yeah, let's go ahead and...
So I move that the board support Article 13 as printed in the 827 draft warrant.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Can I just raise half a hand?
And let's just hope they don't cost what they think it's going to cost. It's 5,000, 10,000 tons. Okay, moving on.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you. Okay, we're, we're taking off number 14, Atwood, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's gone advisory. We're not doing that. We'll probably do that at annual town meeting.
Can these, can the breakneck hill people just put them by there on the way out? Load up an extra truck?
As long as you're here, if there's a couple of barrels more.
All right, the next one is one that's also being taken off because it's complicated. We've got the, are you laughing? Okay, so the study's done.
It is complicated.
The study's done. Everybody's got it. They're recommending a whole lot of new positions, so...
Buckle your seatbelt. Buckle your seatbelt.
No, that's why I was confused because I thought we did this one.
It's, when you read it, it sounds like we're appropriating the funds for the study.
For the study.
And it's implementation of the findings of the study.
Yeah, so it could have been worded a little bit more precisely, but nonetheless, it's coming off anyway.
It's placeholder language. It wasn't something to vote on.
Because they're recommending a lot of changes and obviously, big impact to a budget if we were to do any number of them. So what we thought the plan would be better is to get through town, special town meeting, and then the two, two groups sit down and really flush us out as far as what we think about the report and where we might want to go for fiscal year '26.
I would say let's assign the liaisons soon and have them...
That's a good idea.
And Kathy, I think we ought to think about this on the longer term in the sense of, I'm interested, are there things that we actually ought to do as soon as possible? And I don't know, frankly, I was hoping maybe there was one or two things that we could do for special town meeting here. It doesn't sound like that's the case now.
I just hate to kind of do it that way. I'd rather consider the whole thing if you ever want to do, rather than just do one thing and then regret you did it when you thought about something else, so...
But, I mean...
Well, respectfully, the report itself said that it should be phased over years.
Oh, yeah. But again, I'd like to see that, you know, the five-year plan or whatever it is, it says, "Here's how we get to where we need to be." Here's sort of the, I don't think, my, my initial read is, and forgive me, chief, but I'm not sure I'm, I'm on board to, you know, do everything the plan is asking for, but there's some portion of that.
Well, there's also some discrepancies in it as well between the beginning and the end, so there's some clarification needed.
But again, I think some sort of fairly specific plan that says, "This we now see as our sort of endpoint out of this. This is where we need to get to." And it may not be everything that's in that particular report, but then, and then you back off of that and say, "Okay, here's what we do for FY '25, '26, '27," whatever it might be.
But the problem with that, we don't have time to get that done before town meeting.
I just don't think there's anything that was so pressing that we needed to do it in the matter of weeks.
Yeah, I mean, this is really going to take some thought. So I agree, let's get a liaison, point it from both groups, sit down, and then start meeting just to discuss this.
So I guess my question is, do the chiefs think that there is anything in here that's pressing and obvious that's going to happen regardless of what the other stuff looks like?
Well, Chief...
I'd be interested in hearing that.
Chief Newell did say that he wanted someone to assist him with the body camera stuff because he was working basically a lot of hours.
Well, he wants, no, he wants the lieutenant to, he wants the second lieutenant.
Yeah, I mean, he, and then we said, "No, we're going to do the study." So he was like, "Okay," but I think he sort of wants some assistance right away.
Andrew, do you want to say anything at this point? I know, I know they recommended the deputy, which we were not surprised about.
Yeah, I mean...
You?
So as far as the fire side of the study, I, you know, I'm full support and agree with the majority of what it says. As far as, you know, some immediate actions we could take, you know, there's two off the top of my head, but, you know, whether this town meeting or spring, I think will be up for discussion. One would be the position of deputy chief, and the other is where they talked about staffing us to six. We currently have five firefighters on shift, but we dropped to four. You know, if we just, if we can find a way to fund to keep five firefighters on shift with scheduled leave, you know, not, no sick, no IOD, that would probably take care of 75% of our staffing problem, and that would be without hiring new bodies. You know, that would just be better funding some of those accounts to help replace paid time off and scheduled leave.
How much money are we talking about roughly for that? Any idea?
200, 250,000.
So...
I'd have to do a full analysis of it. So then, you know, looking back the previous year, it's a little bit skewed because we had a lot of vacancies. So, you know, the overtime account was very high, but it was offset by a low permanent salary account due to some very long-term vacancies. So looking at like one, looking at last year's data, it's, like I said, it's definitely slightly skewed.
But it's not a million dollars or something like that.
No, no.
On his side. Normally, we don't do this kind of thing at a special meeting. We prefer to do the budget stuff at the annual town meeting. People think they're done. So this would be unusual anyway, but we did promise the chiefs because Chief Newell had asked for several things for this last budget, fiscal year '25, and we...
Chief Newell right here.
Is he coming? He hears me talking. His ears are burning. So we promised, and what we agreed, so what we agreed to do is do the study and wait and see what it said, and then take it up at special town meeting. So I feel bad, but I didn't expect for the study to come back with so many suggestions that would truly have a really big impact if we were to implement them even over a staggered period. So I still think the better answer is to not do anything for special town meeting, appoint the liaisons, start sitting down with the chiefs right away, and then figure out what we're going to do for the spring.
And for Chief Newell, I'd ask the question, I understand that there's a need for a longer-term plan here that more comprehensive, but my question was, is there anything that is so obvious and pressing that if we did it for special town meeting, it's highly unlikely that we would want to unwind it regardless of what that longer-term plan did? And Chief Pantini was saying that he's got some staffing issues that he would like to address short-term, that are a few hundred thousand dollars kind of number. And the question on the, on the police side, is there anything on your end that you say, "I know we're not going to back off on X, Y, Z here, so if we would consider it for special town meeting, that would be very useful." So that's the question. You need a microphone if you're going to answer that. Don't want to put you on the spot, but...
I'm sorry. I'm going to use a podcast.
Okay, sorry.
So for special town meeting?
Is there anything you'd want us to do since...
Staffing study.
Staffing study immediately, given that we don't have time to deal with the whole thing for the special town meeting. Liaisons are going to be appointed from each group to meet with you, the two chiefs, and we're going to deal with this as soon as town meeting is over with. Sam's asking, "Well, is there anything specific that is not the whole kit and caboodle that you want to do right now that we believe that no matter what we do going forward would stick?"
Oh, that's a good question.
Yeah, it is. And you don't have to answer right now. You can think about it and let us know. Like, do you know that you are absolutely going to always want that second lieutenant no matter what, what we say?
Yeah.
But I think, but I think that, and that the second lieutenant is the most important.
But also, does it have to happen at this meeting and happen immediately? Or is it, can it wait till the budget meeting in the following?
Can't wait till July 1st, yeah.
I mean, the original ask was for this meeting, and the pressing need is still there.
The original ask was last July 1st, this past July 1st, and then we said, "Okay, let's plan it to this." So if you, I don't remember your vote exactly, but we were supportive, the second was supportive of the lieutenant position, the second lieutenant position, so I would, I'd consider that.
What I'm saying is, if that was all the ask is, that's all the ask will be. Right, don't add whatever was in the July meeting now and then ask for more after that. That's why you need the consent. Like, we're not back to July, we're July plus, right?
But if I can say it, I think that originally, before the study was even mentioned as a possibility, you had asked because you were working a lot with the body camera stuff and you had no one to help you. And then we said to you, "Oh, well, we're going to do this study," which was kind of shoving it off down the road. Now, my feeling is, do you want it to be put off for another six months? That's, I'm thinking, no.
I think after reviewing this study, if everybody here has, you can understand the pressing need that we have at the department. And it's not just for the lieutenant's position, it's for patrol as well. And my original ask was lieutenant and patrol officer and then the dispatchers, but as the study points out, it's, it's, we are, we are in a dire state right now. So I really don't want to delve too much into that part of it, but I think that anything that we can get or ask for, starting at this point, is, is vital.
I guess I'd consider trying to do something for special town meeting if we can find something that seems to be an obvious ongoing...
Well, you just said, the second lieutenant.
Okay.
You got, you know, you, you did get two dispatchers, July 1st, right? So you got part of that. You asked for four. You asked for lieutenant, patrolman, and four dispatchers, right? So you've got two dispatchers, no lieutenant, no patrolman.
But is the patrolman the better answer over the lieutenant? Because we know we need patrolmen, and we need several patrolmen according to that. Lieutenant, respectfully, is, was called out in the report, it didn't necessarily have to be a lieutenant to do videotape, it could be a trained person. I know you don't agree with that down this road, but the report called it out, so I think there's discussion there. There's definitely a need to deal with the body cams, but the report called out multiple ways to do that. So I don't think it's as cut as dry as just do lieutenant.
But the report also did recommend a second lieutenant.
Kathy, I think it's too much, the report brought up too much things. If we're going to throw the report away and we're going to go back to just a lieutenant, that doesn't make sense.
If we're going to vet the whole thing...
There's going to be too much discussion on, well, are we going to add more later? Well, we don't want to talk about that now. But then we're going to show up in spring town meeting and say, "Now, we're going to add three more patrol guys, two more dispatchers, a school resource officer," you know, like, there's going to be too much questions about it. Like, I can't package it up in a digestible format for the average town meeting voter to feel comfortable with this decision with the uncertainty of the rest.
Especially at the same time you're going to ask, the school's coming in, whatever, and there's a lot coming down. And I'm not trying to deny the police what they need, and I'm not arguing with the report. I'm saying it's, we should have the time to vet it with you properly to come out with a thing and not just throw something in town meeting because we're late.
Well, respectfully disagree, but I think the request for the lieutenant was in there, what, nine months ago?
Yeah, and the focus has shifted. It's consistently discussing the body cameras, but that is one of a host of other of administrative tasks that we need for that position, operation-wise and administration-wise. And as the, even as the report post, you know, discusses, like, you have a chief that's handling public records requests, and the two other people in my admin side, my business admin and my lieutenant, are completely swamped with stuff. And therefore, it's, this position is not getting the dedication that it needs.
So recently, Andrew and I, at chief's request, met with chief and lieutenant McCarthy. And we spent about, I don't know, two hours, maybe more, with them, and they had a really well-thought-out set of points to make with us. And I left there totally convinced that we, we really need to do some things to, to alleviate the issues they have. So I'd be willing to put a motion on the floor to, to do the lieutenant to at least start solving this problem. We told, we told town meeting we were going to do the study, and then we're going to bring this back at special town meeting. So we're saying now, we're not going to. We promised the chief the same thing. We did vote to, we approved lieutenant when we voted. So I think we're kind of, so I hear you, Andrew, believe me. I was shocked when I saw the report as far as all the positions they're recommending that we do over time, but I am convinced that the second lieutenant is needed based on all the conversations I've had with chief and lieutenant. So I would be willing to, at least select board, to vote on that one.
I have a question about how one might do that. If you, if you did hire a lieutenant, would that be somebody you promoted from inside the department, and then you'd have to backfill a patrolman to fill that position?
If it did come from inside, yes. And then, you know, obviously, I would post the position, as long as they had interest inside, it would stay inside.
Okay, so it wouldn't be, you know, at least the full cost of a new lieutenant at that pay rate presumably.
Yeah.
Still expensive, but not quite as expensive.
Right.
Ballpark, what does it cost if we did this and you got an internal candidate?
So internal?
What do you think you're talking about?
What's that?
Like 140?
I think a little bit less.
I can't remember.
For a new patrolman with benefits?
No, no.
So incrementally, so if you... So incrementally, so if you promote internally a patrolman to?
Well, the patrolman is the patrolman, and then you're still going to add a whole new lieutenant salary, so it's still the full.
And the training, if we read the report, there's the training section too.
Would it be a sergeant who got promoted to lieutenant presumably, so the increment between sergeant?
Do we have a number?
But then you've got to replace the sergeant.
Yeah.
No, if, if we.
I mean, we're, we're, we're sitting here at ten o'clock at night, the chief just walked back in the room. We're trying to put this all together for him, you know, and, and quite honestly, no disrespect to the chief, if you offer him a position, a detective, a lieutenant, whatever you give him, he's going to take it, right?
So it looks like, this group, I think advisory is on a much different path here, so that's, that's their right for sure. It looks like Marguerite's for this, I'm for it. Sam, maybe?
Yep.
Andrew?
Yeah, I also think we're just reaching the point at the evening there. It's getting kind of late, and I might want to, we just need a little more time to put together numbers and.
Okay, so.
But if the, but if the board is interested in doing this, then we can work to put together some numbers and scope and everything. So you've got, because we're meeting again in a week, a little over a week, on the fourth. So we can, you can have something to look at at that time.
Okay.
Okay, I'm a qualified yes, but I want to see the number.
All right, so we've got a plan for that. Advisory, we'll, we'll do their thing.
One, one issue that I see with this is, so for the lieutenant right now, there's also like a contract that lieutenant's eligible for overtime, right? Okay, so would the second, would the second lieutenant also be similarly eligible for overtime in the way that the first one is?
Yes.
Okay.
It'd be the same job description, it's already been drawn up, you know.
Okay, we've got a plan? Everybody agree?
Yep.
Okay, moving on. Thank you, chief, for coming back. Okay, so we have talked about fifteen, sixteen, we've already done, seventeen is possibly amending the date for annual town meetings. It's late. So we're going to meet on the fifth, so you want to put this one to the fifth to talk, if they can do some more?
Yes, and just some context about like, this is an age-old question.
Sorry.
This Saturday, do you do it?
I mean, I just looked at it, the current town meeting, I lie, was amended three times within a three-year period of trying to get it right in the exact day and time. So, I don't know that we're going to come up with the genius solution to this.
I think we just rewrite it to give the select board the flexibility to do it up to the deadline of state law and figure it out.
I'm happy with that.
Yep.
So let's, let's still, we'll talk about this for sure on the fifth, right? You guys can talk about it too. I agree. We're okay waiting to the fifth to truly finalize this one? All right?
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I don't know what we'd sign up for right now.
Okay, well, we've still got a lot to do here, and advisory's here later, so let's get this done. Okay, next one is citizens, this, we got two citizens petitions. This is the one from, is Lisa Bryshill there to sponsor this one?
Yeah.
So she sponsored this to basically take the appointing authority away from the select board for those that are supposed in CPC from other committees. So rather than open space recommending someone, designating someone, then we appoint, whoever they appoint goes right to CPC without anything to do with select board vote. So, we know why, this is here, I don't think we've got to regurgitate that. Everybody ready to vote on this one, select board?
Yep.
Okay, Al, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I will move that the select board support Article eighteen as.
Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I will move that the select board move, support Article eighteen as written in the eight-twenty-seven draft of the warrant.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, we're done with that one. So you guys can do your thing on that one.
On the, just have it edited up, seven for the CHOPC doesn't have the initial term.
What?
All the other ones have an initial term, right, so you can stagger them, but the CHOPC number seven.
They're going to have to change CHOPC because CHOPC's going away.
We can't change it.
It's fine. Yeah, we can't edit it now, then we have that on the floor, but just.
Okay, the last one we haven't seen yet, so we'll, we'll take that one up on the fifth. Right, Joe Palmers?
Yep.
All right, so that's it, guys, for going through the warrant. Okay, so the plan is to try to get with the planning board on the ninth, right, to really get through MBTA, right, with the three of us? And then you guys will do your thing as far as voting on everything else that you haven't already voted on, which is almost everything else, right? Okay, you got it? All right, you want to enter in your meeting?
Barry?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Marcy?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Andrew's aye, six aye, good night.
Thank you, guys, for hanging with us.
Hourly pay rate is declining here, guys.
Welcome, Barry.
Thank you very much.
This is good, good initiation for you, Barry.
Okay, I'm going to try to get other people out of here that I think are here for, so Kevin, you're here for the railing? Oh, you're just being a good spouse, okay, it's, what am I talking about? Of course, of course. Hi, I'm Chief. So, you want to do the railing though, right?
How about this, just in the interest of maybe getting this done as fast as possible, how about if I, here's the bottom line on, on the railing project, okay?
And then I want to get chiefs out here too.
This is something, at this point, anything we could just postpone until the next meeting, I would do it since we're getting late. This, we have to act on that, because the CPC application deadline is Friday. Prepared, working with Kevin and Bill Condeff, prepared a draft that I circulated, Mark circulated it around two or three o'clock. Basically, you have three different options about how you can do this rail replacement project at various price points. The ballpark estimate for properly replacing what we have right now with the railing is inclusive of engineering costs is a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So, for the purpose of getting the ball rolling and starting a discussion with CPA, this application asks for the hundred and ten. You know, on the, the questions asked, what is the benefit for this project? Is it CPA-eligible? Those are very easy to answer with this. This is why the CPA was created, was to fund historical rehabilitation restoration projects like this. Something that we identified as a goal for this year. It's, so I think it's kind of a layup. And hoping the board will support the application which we circulated, and I'll just submit it, and we'll get the ball rolling. Does that sound good?
Yes.
Sounds good to me.
I agree.
Okay.
Let's do it.
Yep.
We need a motion?
So, I move that the board approve submitting the CPC application for the town common rail replacement project.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, so who's submitting? Select board?
Yes, we are the.
Okay, we're there. Okay, and Kevin, you're happy with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, check it off. So Chief Pantini, are you here because of the alert system?
That being the Deerfoot Road train.
The Deerfoot Road?
Well, if you have any questions on the.
Oh, okay, so let's get those two things out of the way real quick. Okay, consent agenda, one of the things here is a release of liability that Liz Lyden has drafted. We've been given a house to do a active fire training in, is that the right terminology? I guess they're going to burn it, and practice putting the fire out.
Yeah, exactly. So, we were donated a property at twenty-six Deerfoot Road, it's a house slated for demolition. We went through the process with DEP to abate it of asbestos, and something the contractor has to do anyways. DEP usually allows one of these a year per community. A lot of communities do not take advantage of it. You know, we have the opportunity, it, it provides for realistic training and exciting training for the members, so.
Why do the, why does the homeowner getting rid of this house in this manner?
Their demolition, and it, a contractor's demo on it to.
Build a new.
New house.
Right, so they're going to build a new house on the, on the lot?
It's a small house there, it's a bigger house.
I'm not sure what they coordinated exactly, but something bigger.
It looks like it's pretty close to the neighbors' there, so it is.
Yeah, it meets the requirement on the one side, and the garage is helping protect it. We're going to keep the, you know, the control fires to the opposite side of the property, so.
And I assume it's not an older house, subject to the demolition delay by law?
Yeah, part of this is, it has to have an active, an approved demo.
Okay, but.
Has to be vetted through the building environment.
So, Kevin Miller's sitting here, I want to make sure. So, how old is this house?
Just probably in the fifties.
Okay, all right, so it's not a, okay, so it's not subject to the, what we call the demolition delay by law, okay. All right, so everybody okay with approval? So, Mark has dealt with Liz Lyden, she said, we want the homeowner to basically sign this saying that no liability here if something goes wrong in this, so that we can't, they can't come back and sue us for anything, so. What?
There's one word missing in the liability.
Okay, so let's get that word in there. So tell us what it is.
The word's gone down, it says, which is proposed to be used for controlled something for training purposes. It should be burn or practice or fire. It has controlled, there's no word that's.
Yeah, I have not seen.
Just right there, I've never seen it, it's controlled something.
I think burn would be.
I did, yeah, I did.
Burn, okay, that's it, just that.
Okay, so Al, you want to make a motion to approve that?
I move that we approve the, I'm sorry. The, the release as amended by Ms. Landry.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, so you got your approval for that. Okay, now the second thing is, this is ARPA-related, so we're not going to vote right this minute, I'm just going to tell you what we're going to do, so you don't have to stay for this. Staying here is not going to change your chance of getting this, but you do have to tell us this. So Chief Pantini says that our fire alert system is old antiquated, needs to be replaced. He thinks it's going to cost about seventy-five thousand dollars. He has gone to capital, it is now on the capital plan. He would like to use, he'd like to do this soon, so he'd like to use ARPA money to do this. We're going to talk about ARPA in a second, so all I need you to say tonight is, you know that if we were to approve this, that you can actually get this totally priced, committed, dotted-line signed, so that by twelve, thirteen, twenty-four, we're committed to doing this. It doesn't have to be in place, but you've got to have us committed to the price, contract signed, everything. If not, we should put this on the warrant for the spring.
Yep, no, we've been doing a lot of homework over the past several weeks and months since I started, and we already had contractors in with estimates, and it's pretty much turnkey ready to go.
Okay, and seventy-five thousand is a good number?
Yes, so that's going to, so it, the total package is, you know, the fire alerting system, there's two, two components to this project. One is the in-station equipment, which would be new lights, it's going to leverage whatever we can in the building already, audio systems, it's going to add new lighting, and just situational awareness for the crews, you know, new and improved station boards. So, you know, if we respond to one of your residences, we're going to get a Google map image of the street view of the property as we're going out the door and any incident information. The other side of it is, we want to upgrade our mobile data terminals and all the apparatus. Currently, they're running on tablets, and they're just not, they're not mission-critical, they're not, you know, they're disposable, for lack of better terms. There's much more robust computers we can put in the trucks that are specifically designed for public safety use. So those computers will also communicate to the crews information of the call as it's happening. Both these upgrades also future-proof us, as we talk about our new, potential new communication system, you know, it just future-proofs us to be turnkey for different operations.
Okay, so seventy-five K for both things, and you're comfortable that seventy-five K will get spent?
Yes.
Because we don't want you to say seventy-five K, then come back and say, well, it's actually seventy, when by the time we get the bill next year, it's too late. We'd have to give that money back to the government. We're trying to spend every penny of this.
No, uh, uh, make sure we spend every penny.
Okay, so you don't need to, because.
That's not a problem.
It's going to be a few minutes before we get this. You don't need to stay, there's nothing else you can say to sway us, I don't think. We'll let you know what, what we do. So, you can stay if you want to, I'm just trying to get you out of here.
No, I appreciate it, all right.
Okay, so that's it for the moment. Okay, as far as what we've got to get done, we got reports, we've got some more things on this, we've done some of the consent agenda, we've got more to do. We've got to do this ARPA, we got votes for the ARPA, so we got to do that, because that time limit is ticking.
If you want to push the executive session to the fourth, you can.
That's what I think we need to do. Okay, so Mark is whispering in my ears, we were supposed to have an executive session, which is why poor Chief Newell's sitting here to start talking about the negotiations for the new police contract. We can do that on the fourth if we're, we don't have a lot on the fourth right now, I can tell you, we got room for it. So we can push that to the fourth and not stay so late tonight, and let him go home, okay?
We could even begin with it.
Yeah, we could. So we will work, thank you, chief, is that okay? Okay, we want you to get home, okay?
But it's good that you were here for the budget conversation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Well, we have a full meeting on the fourth, so we, we, we're at it. Okay, now let's go back to reports. Okay, these are actually important reports, so start with the NEARI Building Committee vote that took place a week ago Monday. So the NEARI Building Committee, seven members, including myself, Andrew Faff, has voted to recommend to town meeting to build a whole new four-grade NEARI. To tear down current NEARI, build it on the same footprint, more or less, it's going to be bigger, but still, tear it down and put it there. We estimate the cost to the town at sixty-four million dollars. We think the whole project is ninety-four million dollars. We get about thirty million dollars from the state.
Was it the four-grade numbers, seventy-four?
Four-grade numbers.
I thought it was eighty-five for four-grade.
Nope, the. You're right, sorry, Sam, you're right. Sorry. Eighty-four million dollars is the debt to the town, thank you very much. Sixty-four was for the two grade. So eighty-four million dollars is what we think the bond that we'd have to float right now, knowing what we know, would be to build that school. State gives us thirty million, so the whole thing is about a hundred fourteen million dollar project, so expensive project. It has come down, it started at a hundred fifty or so, we've gotten it down during various things. I'm hoping it's going to go down more between now and April. So this is the plan. So at this point, we've submitted the next document to the MSBA this week, we signed that, had a meeting, that's done. So the architects now start on their schematic design phase. That's expected to take until, call it March or so. That gets submitted, and then, again, MSB doesn't do anything until the town meeting approves the project. So the plan is right now to have a special town meeting in April to approve the project, and we've got to approve the whole cost of it, even though we know MSB is going to give us a pretty big grant, but that's just the rule. So we've got to bring the whole cost in front of the town, that's what gets, that's what's in the article, so that's kind of the progress. Now, if we're going to close, if we're going to build a four-grade school, we're going to close FIN. FIN gets closed if this gets approved. So I believe that the select board needs to have a plan in place. This is not the NEARI Building Committee's job. Select Board's job to have an answer for what happens to FIN if the school, new school gets approved. So we'll talk about this again on the fifth, so kind of think about this in between. One thing to do is to ask capital to come forward with a plan to use FIN, maybe as-is. We don't have another fifteen million dollars to spend on FIN if we do this, I'm very confident. So ask capital to come forth with a plan to use FIN as-is, for example, move rec there, we can move some of the departments at, that are at Court of Hall there, and expand the use there for senior centers, et cetera. So we've got to decide, we've got, because at town meeting, it's got to be answered. You can't just say, we don't know what's going to happen to FIN. So we're going to have to have an answer for town meeting to be able to explain what happens to FIN, so that people don't think we're going to come forward with another, you know, fifteen million dollar project if taxes are going to be the reason they are going to vote this up or down. Remember, we've got to have a two-thirds vote for this in April. So, food for thought, we'll talk about it again on the fourth, fourth, not the fifth, the fourth. But the vote's done, so that part's there, it's, it's a new four-grade school. Okay? I would also encourage you to go back and look at that meeting, it's not a crazy-long meeting, it's, it's two hours, to see what each person said, because each person, you know, Jason went to each person to see what their thoughts were. We listened to the public, and, and then we voted, okay? All right, the second thing is an update on all four, forty-B projects. So we've got four forty-B projects on the table. You've got one-twenty Turnpike Road, Dave Ferris's. You've got Dave Ferris's at two-fifty Turnpike Road, behind his beehive. You've got Park Central, which has been, you know, the second version of it, and then you've got the one that they told us about at our last meeting that is just in its infancy. So the reason I'm bringing this up is you may want to tune in with what's going on in the CBA. So on September, the.
Fourth.
Fourth, the same night we're meeting, which is a Tuesday, so I don't know why, excuse me, it's a Wednesday. So they're meeting too. They are going to probably vote on Park Central. So, that's probably going to happen. They're also going to take up one-twenty Turnpike Road. It's in peer review, they've already gotten through the traffic study, the traffic was fine. They've got a few of the buses, that's the one big question, there's how the bus drops off kids there. Then, so they expect the peer review to be. Then, so they expect the peer review to be back. So Ferris and team is really pushing ZBA to get done because he wants to make the charitable donation of the land in 2024. And he doesn't want to do it till he knows he's got a comprehensive permit for the 40Bs. So he's kinda, in his mind, they're tied together. We may disagree with that as far as, as that goes, but that's how he's looking at the world. So he's really pushing them to, to accelerate. So they added the discussion of 120 to the September 4th meeting at his request. They're gonna do Park Central first and then they're gonna turn to, to that one as far as really getting into the peer review issues and some of the things that people have brought up. Okay, so that's, that's that one in Park Central. 250 Turnpike Road, they continue to talk to the neighbors there. So the neighbors are, they've got a group that is, got a good vo, you know, they've, they got a good voice. Ferris is listening to them, so they're trying to finalize that. So those plans have not been submitted yet. So that comes next. They told ZBA about six weeks to get those plans submitted, okay? And then 352 is still, is being thought about. So that's an update on those. I continue to be rather frustrated with what's going on as far as 120. All we still keep hearing is the impact on the conservation land. No one stands up and talks about the impact on people who need housing in this town, including senior citizens. So I am hoping to go to a planning board meeting soon and try to represent the people who need apartments in this town. Madison Place is totally full with a waiting list. Down the street is totally full with a waiting list, so we need apartments in this town. I'm not even talking about the discounted ones, we need apartments, period. Yes, it's nice that we're gonna have some that are less rent, but we need apartments. So I'm hoping that this is going to go along. It's, 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 it's going, but it's not going as fast as it could go. All right, so that's the update on where the 40Bs, but again, September, we're gonna be meeting, so we won't be there in person, but we might want to tune in on that one. Summer nights 2024 was a spectacular success, to say the least. I don't know how many people were there, Andrew, but it was a lot. I know you were there, they told me, I got there after you left, so I don't know if you two went, but it was fantastic.
It was.
Beautifully done, pulled off without a hitch, not, I know nothing that went wrong whatsoever. So I'm bringing this up because I do want to give a shout out to Christina McCarthy. Christina was by herself from May 4th to the first week in June when the assistant was hired and then Travis started the first week in July. So she had to deal with the rec camp all summer, she had to deal with summer nights and I think that they were just both flawlessly done. I actually, as you know, had grand nieces that went to the camp and I saw how well it was done. So I think she just deserves a whole lot of kudos, the whole department does, but she really handled this whole thing by herself for over a month. So they did it and it's over with, so.
Best ever, in my view, actually. I've been to a lot of them.
Yeah, I mean, that fireworks, those fireworks are great.
I didn't see the fireworks, but more food trucks than usual, including a hot dog truck, which was great for me.
Yep.
Not one, but two ice cream trucks, so.
Yes.
I, I got everything I wanted out of it, so.
Andrew did say he wishes they would change the band, I'm going for it. He's heard that same band a lot, but I hadn't, so I thought the band...
Anyway, great job all around for record.
It was such, it was such a nice night and it was just, you know, nice to sit back and relax and not have to worry about anything, just sit back kind of in the crowd and just watch what's going on.
It seemed to have a great time, so it was wonderful.
All right, my last one is, and this is good news, this is not bad, this is good news. So Code Red has been in the space where Tommaso's was for a few years, they're up above. And they've got a very good business, we've actually used them for the town. So they needed more space, so they have negotiated with Bill De Petri to move to my building, taking twice the amount of space and gonna hire 20 to 30 more people. So that is a win. You know, and that's where, you know, EDC could come in to, you know, make sure that when that, when somebody needs more space, we make sure that we help them find more space. So they're gonna stay, he'll have to rent the other space, but it's still doubling the space. So he's filling a big vacancy in my building by doing, they're taking up the whole top floor that's vacant, so. So that was good news. Okay, who's next? Let's see. Do we need to say anything else about the CHOPC?
Yeah, we talked about that.
No, I think we've covered it.
All right. Margaret, you want to talk about future space for the Historical Commission?
This will be really, really quick. As we all know, the Historical Commission and the Historical Society are sort of physically separating for the first time in a long time. There's issues with where the Historical Commission will locate itself and if there are objects in inventory or objects that are newly acquired, where in town they will be. So I am in discussion with Kevin and also with John Parent and also with Jim Hegarty about the documents and Kelly O'Brien about options for places to go in town with that because it's, it's gonna be a new day for the Historical Commission because I think it's been, what, 50 years at least that they've been sharing space with the society. So that's it. I'll keep you posted.
Please do, good job. Mark?
So just briefly, I just wanted to make the board aware and use this as a little bit of a public service announcement that Eversource is gonna be doing work on Main Street near the CSX River Crossing. They're gonna be lining the gas main underneath the road. They're gonna be, you know, cutting a hole in the road before and after the crossing on the eastbound travel lane, which is closest to Morals and Lamy's. One lane is gonna remain open during working hours. Based on the conversations Bill Kondav has had with Eversource, they're gonna need to shut down one lane of traffic for up to three days, starting on September 2nd. There'll be signage. Eversource is reaching out to the businesses, but I just want to say, Bill Kondav has done a nice job of personally doing outreach to the businesses, letting them know what's going on, letting them know what's to be expected and making sure they're fully aware of everything. So just wanted to let the board know that that is going to be happening.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to consent agenda. We can either do the minutes tonight or we can do them next time. Anybody want to do minutes tonight?
Minutes are easy, one small typo.
Well, I got a few, that's why I'm asking.
Either way.
You know, how about this, I'm just in favor of anything to just shorten the meeting.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna do the minutes for August 6th next time, Mark?
Yeah, okay.
Okay? All right, so now we've got B, C, we've already done D, BCE, we've already done F, G. H, we're not doing tonight. She, Kristen didn't know about this, so she asked to come to a future meeting, so we're not doing her at all. Okay, so we're gonna do B, C, E, G, I, and J.
Can I hold J just for one explanation?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, anybody want to hold anything else?
So I believe in the packet, the, in the original packet, the letter says that the Tricentennial Committee will be selling the bricks. In fact, the Friends of South Borough 300, the nonprofit that supports the work of the Tricentennial Committee will be selling the bricks. With that clarification, I hope everyone will support the request.
Yep.
Okay, everybody understands it's the little bit, the walk between Saint Mark Street and the circle, okay? And they think it's about 300 bricks, they're gonna sell, we're gonna sell them, say wait, because I'm part of the Friends group, for $300 per, because it kind of makes sense. It, I think it's a good number, plus it's the 300th anniversary, right? So it's 10,000 bucks or so they're raising.
90,000, 300, 300.
I rounded Sam. 320 bricks, so I'm actually closer to, it's closer to 10 than 9.
I thought you said 10,000, sorry.
I still can't believe I said 64 million a minute ago, but, okay. All right, so everybody okay with that? That you're fine now, Andrew, as far as that one goes?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items, B, C, E, G, I, and J.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, we're through that. Okay, now what we got last? ARPA?
Did we approve the release of liability for the...
Yeah, we did that a minute ago. That's when Chief Pantini said, that's what we did, so we actually voted on it.
Didn't remember whether we voted.
I know, it's just, okay, so let's see. We can punt select board hours until...
Yep.
Next time, right?
Yep.
Unless someone's got you in September. Okay, so we'll punt that one. Let's do the approval of the application to CPC from the AH, AHTFC. Okay, so everybody that went to that meeting knows what we're talking about. Andrew wasn't there, so Andrew...
I know what's happening.
Okay, the trust did approve it to do it and then Al, just want select board to also approve what the trust is doing.
So the motion should be to, I move that the select board support the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee's application to the CPAC for affordable housing, for moving funds from the CPA to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's done. All right. We can do ARPA on the fifth too. We were gonna do it even on 17th, so we can do ARPA on the fourth, sorry, Mark, I keep doing fifth, the fourth. So everybody remember, we're meeting on Wednesday next time because of election day on Tuesday. Okay, that's it for tonight.
No hands raised for public comment.
I'm gonna ask, guys, give me a chance here. That's it as far as the agenda goes, right? Okay, so we've punted a few things, but not, not too many.
Oops, we have a hand. Pam.
Nope, nope, yes, no.
Should I move to adjourn? That was fast.
Okay, we approve the position in the consent agenda.
There's no hand.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?